Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting of July 24th, 2019 of the Willett City Council to order. And please join me in the pledge of the flag.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Kathy?
Councilmember Connie. Here. President Strong.
Yes.
American Zollis.
Here. Public communication. And again, this is for items not on the agenda, but council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken. So is there anybody that would like to speak on something not on the agenda? If you want to come up here and state your name.
My name is Eric Martin and I'm representing the Arts Center tonight. And I'd like to say art in public spaces plays a distinguishing role in our country's history and culture. It reflects and reveals our society, enhances the meaning in our civic spaces, and adds uniqueness to our communities. Public art harmonizes the built environment and provides an intersection between past, present, and future, between disciplines and idea. Public art matters because our communities gain cultural, social, and economic values of public art. Some of the things that public art offers are economic growth and sustainability, attachment and cultural identity, artists as contributors, social cohesion and cultural understanding, and also public health. Public art addresses public health. I'm proposing a public sculpture for the city park here across from City Hall. This will be a major project involving the entire community and help from the city. Fundraising projects are now being researched. The proposed sculpture would be a 16-foot redwood totem stylized people standing on each other's shoulders as a symbol of those who came before us and whose shoulders we now stand on. Contemporary styling, it's a very readable sculpture. In conclusion, perhaps better than all other symbols in the arts cut across separations, we give rise to many voices, making it possible for people who are racially, economically, and ethnically divided to begin to understand one another on a more authentic level. The arts connect each new generation to those that have gone before. The arts are a society's gift to itself, linking hope to memory, inspiring courage and discipline, enriching our celebrations, and making our tragedies more bearable. Thank you.
Carrie, I look forward to hearing more.
I beg your pardon?
I look forward to hearing more.
Okay.
Good. All right. Are there anybody else that wants to speak on something not on the agenda?
Hi. I'm Cynthia Riser-Jevons, and I'm here just to bring up something for public awareness. A few weeks ago, I began hearing rumors that in the fire safety plans PG&E would be clearing ground and cutting trees using, clearing ground using glyphosate around power poles and in cutting trees using garlon to reduce the resprouting of trees that have been cut. And I was very concerned about this. I attended the Mendocino County presentation that PG&E gave, and they said, yes, indeed, they would be using these things, but that people could opt out of it. And I thought that sounded complicated in order for the public to get to know about it. And so then I attended our very recent presentation from PG&E and spoke with the supervising vegetation program manager from Mendocino and Humboldt, and he said people would need to opt into it. And so here I had conflicting information from PG&E. And so I've received an email from Eric Haggerty, who is the supervising vegetation program manager, and he sent me a link to this pamphlet, which I've printed some out. And basically, it sounds like if people have certain kinds of poles, and I'm still a little unclear about what those kinds of poles are, that they would have something called a vegetation management agreement where the customer has the opportunity to agree to what is completed. It sounds like there's either a full agreement, a partial agreement, or that the customer who has one of these poles in front of their homes might also agree to take care of it completely themselves. So I don't have complete answers here, but I believe that, you know, this is a concern for us all in the near future. We know that glyphosate is exceedingly toxic and carcinogenic. We know that garlon is terrible bad news, and we need to keep our communities fire safe. So I wanted the city council to be aware of these issues perhaps before your own presentation from PG&E comes, some questions might arise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I share these?
Yes. Cynthia. Can we, I'd like to have us follow up on that because I share Cynthia's concern about, you know, use of some of these herbicides on our private owners. You know, the city doesn't use these on city property, and I would like to make sure our residents aren't being exposed to it without their express permission either. And it sounds like we're getting mixed signals based on what Cynthia Riser-Jevons just told us. So can we, as a city, ask that our residents have to have, you know, express permission to use such things on their properties, or what? What can we do?
We don't know. If you want staff to research that issue, I need some consensus there and to direct staff to do that.
Or invite?
Or if you want us to research it and write a staff report, the council can direct staff to do that.
I'd like us to find out what PG&E is actually, you know, what?
They're not slated to come back, are they?
No, they're not. The only thing they've been talking to us about are PSPSs. And we've had quite a few meetings with them.
And they did do a presentation here a couple of months ago, so they're probably not going to do another presentation at the council.
Probably not at PSPSs. We can certainly, if council, again, council decides, I can invite them to talk to us about it. Or I could do, there are any number of things I could do. I could write a staff report, we could, and I could assign staff to research it. I could invite PG&E to come and speak to that. And I know they're busy with PSPSs right now, but I know, and I talked with P.I. today. She's on vacation for two weeks, but she maybe can come to a future meeting. It depends on what council she's on.
Would that be the easiest for staff?
Probably.
Well, I would be for doing that, and that way...
Invite PG&E to come to answer questions.
Invite them to come, and they can also deliver any other information they have at the time, too, trying to get the word out, so.
I agree in invitation.
Okay.
I think the fact that, you know, county-wide use of Roundup and glyphosate has been in disuse and city-wide speaks to the fact of how many residents in our communities are concerned about that issue. And if PG&E could come and speak to that and make it clear to property owners.
That they can opt out, or whether, are there options?
What their options are.
There are options for opting out.
Yeah.
And that way, we could, depending what they give us, we could put a link on our web page, something.
That'd be good. If there's a form people can fill out that they could give out, then we can pose something.
I'm hoping that they would get opt-in if they're going to use it rather than the people, every single person who might be affected has to go to the trouble of...
We can certainly invite them to...
But that's when they come, we can...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And regarding what Carrie Martin was speaking about, do we need to agendize that at some point?
I think he needs to come back with the project. He just basically told us that.
Okay.
So that's why I said I kind of look forward to hearing more.
Yeah, so I do, too. If he would like to, I know that he has a conceptual design. He can, I mean, he can share that with the group at any time. And then if you choose to want to agendize that and decide how you want to move forward, you can do that.
Well, my thought is if he's going to do any grant seeking or anything, he would need to make sure that this is already acceptable to the city.
Exactly. So I think it's really important that you, I was sort of hoping he was going to pass on a conceptual design. And maybe I can encourage him to do that because he can always privately give you all a copy of what he has in mind, and I think that's a good idea.
Well, it has to be agendized.
For you to discuss it, but just, he can certainly give it to you.
Okay.
And I can advise him that he should hand it out to you and mail it, and we can make sure that you guys will get a copy of it.
All right. Anybody else in the public want to speak on anything else not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Shawna Martin, and my family owns Brown's Corner.
And I'm Laura Roland, and I'm a new business owner in town of a food truck called, we're making gelato and Italian ice.
And we found out that we can't invite the food truck on our property because we're on Main Street. And so we're here to talk to you or ask you if we could be agendized and see if there's something we can do to relax the ordinance or talk about the ordinance and change it slightly.
Yeah, we're interested in, Shawna and I were talking about maybe our food truck could be parked at Brown's Corner. It's really adorable and sells a great product, if I say so myself. So it would add to our town. There's nothing like it at the southern end of town. And Shawna has all these ideas for how she wants to develop Brown's Corner and, you know, make it, continue to improve it. And we thought that parking our food truck there would be a great idea, but it's in the no-go zone of the zoning regulations. So we're asking if the city council would consider, consider making an exception or changing the zoning or whatever.
I mean, you know, we could even take it further and offer, we have enough space to offer, you know, food truck nights and bring in like all of Mendocino County food trucks or something. We could do music, I mean, we could make it a little community event if we could work with the ordinance a little bit.
Since we act as the planning, should it as well, would it be appropriate for them to, have you talked to Dusty yet?
I have. Yes.
Okay. And would the step be for them to request for...
I think the first step, a good step for them to, is, is you to talk among yourselves and say, hey, Stephanie, we'd like to talk, we'd like you to agendize this so we can actually discuss it and talk about what our next steps would be. And so it could be a public discussion about, okay, what does the ordinance say, on what circumstances could they do that, what would have to be changed to let that happen? And that way, we can sort of give you information. We can't do it now because it's...
No, no. But in analysis...
But all I have to do is agendize it, do a short little, I can do a little introduction about, this is the food truck ordinance, I would probably just put that in the agenda packet, is what it says now, and that would give everybody a chance to discuss it.
I would be happy to have that happen.
And I would, too. So no, you know, no revision to it, and so we do that.
So it's just a discussion of the existing food truck ordinance.
So that's where we start out. So it's not like the day you come, we're going to say, yay, you're not.
Right. We're going to...
It can't be specific to you, but rather the ordinance.
Okay. Should we expect to come to the next council meeting, or should we wait to hear?
I think that'll depend on staff.
Why don't you give your information to the city clerk? And when we have, when we can get it on an agenda, which will hopefully be soon, we will let you know.
Great.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Next call, anybody else for something not on the agenda? All right. Going, going, gone. Okay. Item three, public matters. Notice of public hearing, discussion, and consideration of a resolution to create a utility undergrounding district in the immediate vicinity of Snyder Park along State Street, Marin Street, Humboldt Street, and East Commercial Street.
Yeah, Stephanie Gerbert, city manager. So a few, a couple of months ago, I received a very terse letter from PG&E saying that we, that there was a city, the city of Live Oak wanted to do an undergrounding project, and they did not have enough money to do it. And we had available what's called 20A credits to do undergrounding, and we did not have an active district. Therefore, if we did not have an active district, we could have 0.34 percent of our money taken away. And I, first time I had heard of a 20A district, I asked staff about this, and they said, well, 0.34 of one percentage point doesn't sound like a real important thing. But I called PG&E up and said, so what is this, and tell me, tell me more. And what they said was that the city of Willets had previously had undergrounding districts. They haven't had one in a very long time. We have...
Stephanie, can you explain what undergrounding is just?
Oh, I'm sorry. Great question. So undergrounding is where we have power lines pretty much all over the place. Undergrounding puts those, takes away the power poles and puts all the lines underground. So it takes away the visual impact, and everybody gets, in the district will then get their electricity from, sort of, the wires will come through tunnels in the ground. And it really helps with visual impact, it helps with fire safety, there's just a lot of benefits to undergrounding. And I then asked Andrea Trincato of our engineering department to find, is there any information on this? And she found all sorts of information dating back to pre-2006. After 2006, all information of this in the city of Willets seems to, there was no, there was no discussion. I asked staff what are, what would be likely candidates for undergrounding, and interestingly, what they said was around Snyder Park. They knew that that had been a previous discussion and that that was probably the most active discussion. When Andrea brought up materials, that was actually the district that had been discussed before and was, there was a lot of paperwork on it. The property owners had been talked to about it, and the county, back in the day, had even been approached about using some of their 20A money to combine with our money to complete the project. What PG&E told me is that since this was a very short timeframe that we had to create a district, because we needed a map, we needed a resolution, we needed a staff report, it was a little bit complicated, and she goes, you need to do it now because if you don't have a full resolution, a public hearing, and a map, and all these things by the 24th, you will lose your money. And anyone who does have this resolution, then that 0.3 percent, that might go up. And although it doesn't sound like much now, that could go up. So just go do it, and you can always change it, you can always modify it, you can start another district. PG&E is so, frankly, so busy with the power safety shut-offs, we're not even going to look at undergrounding districts this year. And all the resolution says is that this is a project you want to have done by 2026. And just to preserve your money, just pass the best resolution you can fairly short now of time. This was a, this, there are very particular criteria for an undergrounding district. It has to be on a major street, it has to talk about view corridors, they have all these points that you have to, that you have to meet to be able to qualify for undergrounding. I was also told that residents who were very interested in the past in undergrounding in Van Lane because of the visual I saw there, because they wanted to make that more attractive. But PG&E had already denied that project because of it wasn't off a major arterial, and it would not benefit enough residents. The district, PG&E, has already looked at the map around the park, and they agreed that it met all the criteria underneath the statute. So we could pass this today and preserve our money. I've heard a lot of positive feedback so far about that because it is our park, and so it's, you know, we want to make our park attractive. I've also heard very positive things from the fire district because it would involve a new firehouse, and they already have to underground their lines, and we're planning to. And that was actually part of their budget, to underground lines. So this would actually be a benefit to the new firehouse. And so before you today is, so before you today is the resolution for PG&E. They've already approved the format of the map and staff report and the resolution, and if you approve this, we'll preserve our money. And we've given notice to the property owners, and so we are opening up a public hearing. We need to open up a public hearing to hear comments on it, and then if you so wish, we can pass this resolution.
So at this point, I'd rather take council comment now. I'll just open it up to the public, and if anybody would like to speak towards our undergrounding district, now's your time.
There, have you seen the map of the proposed district?
That's what I was going to ask about. So the, I'm Bernard Kameroff, I live right across the street from the city park, and I was just curious whether, where the boundaries were, whether the power line undergrounding was on both sides of the street for the four surrounding streets, or just around the park side of the street or not.
And it's a good question, and I asked that of PG&E as well, and Andrea and I actually walked the perimeter of the park. And our understanding is the way we were to draw the map is that the poles on the park would, and anything that connected, any residences that connected to those poles would also be undergrounded. And that's why those residences across the street would be included.
Well, I see the boundary goes all the way north to the railroad tracks pretty much back there.
I think because the building next to the park is actually your building, and so that's one structure, so we looped up that entire property. It has it directly connected with the park's poles.
Well, I think that's a great idea. My question would be, when they put the wires underground, then they have to reconnect each house. Is that going to be a charge to the residents?
My understanding that it is not.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
No, I'm waiting to give my comment.
All right. All right, at this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up here to us. So Larry?
This is not a new thing, that the district maybe is new, but in the late 80s, early 1990, this was proposed with Bud Snyder Park because of the trees growing into it. And I don't know what happened to it, but Peter Caton was the guy from PG&E at that particular time, and he lived in Fort Bragg. And he told the council at that particular time that they had the money to do it, and for whatever reason, the council did not do it. And so it's been on hold ever since then. And I know that is, that's a fact, and I've told the city manager that several times. And it wasn't this large, it was, and it wasn't Bud Snyder Park because Bud Snyder was still alive at that particular time. So, and I, and we lived on the house, the Victorian, right across the street from the park also. And I don't know why it hasn't been done. I mean, I can't believe that since that time, that they had to make a new underground utilities district and, you know, to have this done. I mean, the city has proposed it for years. And anyhow, I just wanted to know, everybody to know that it has been proposed by the council since that time.
Let's get Greta.
I just wanted to point out to the public, too, that the amount available to the city in the PG&E fund is $931,853. So preserving this money is a great idea, and then having access to that money to actually get this job done is quite good.
So my question was just, having established this, if we do that tonight, we aren't necessarily limited to these boundaries. I mean, we could decide not to do the whole thing.
Absolutely. You could decide to modify it in any way you choose in the, in the...
But it's a great idea.
But right now, we're just sort of placeholder. Let's keep our money.
Yeah.
And I learned a lot about 20A districts, which is...
Sounds like a very good idea.
So I support it, but I guess kind of realistic for the public, too, is that not knowing maybe it was affordable back when, when you're talking about Larry, but I'm hoping we could do the whole park with that money and...
That's, so this is really interesting. We won't get an estimate until we pass the resolution. Then the woman I spoke to from PG&E said she will bring a team and meet with us, and then they'll look at all the poles and give us an estimate. We also have to meet with Comcast and Xfinity and all those folks who also have lines because they have to be a part of this. And I have no idea how much this is going to cost. Back in 2006, they were looking at it at about a half a million dollar project. Clearly, it's more, but when you have an active district, so Live Oak, as you saw, didn't have enough money, so they could take other people's funds. Ostensibly, we could do the same thing.
And I think we discussed this before, that this letter, these letters went out to several municipalities because a lot of people were sitting on money.
And I'm guessing a lot of municipalities didn't do anything.
I will move approval of the staff recommendation.
What was she saying, any further discussion? Call for the vote there, Kathy.
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Roderick Zollis.
Of St. I have no property in the zone.
Strong.
Yes?
Stransky.
Yes.
American Zollis.
Yes. All right. And now, item B, discussion regarding request by farmers market management to have amplified music in Old Rexall Parking Lot during farmers market on Thursdays, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Do we have a representative of the farmers market here?
Good evening, STEAM City Council and staff. Thank you for providing this forum and giving me an opportunity to speak on this matter. My name is Francisco Hernandez, and I am the acting market manager for the Willet's Farmers Market. This is my first year as market manager. I took over in April, and it's my job to facilitate the transition to our outdoor location on West Mendocino Avenue. That began in May. This is the first year that the market has been in this location. As you might be aware, it formerly was in Bud Snyder Park, and then it was moved to Rexall Park. Last year, we were in a parking lot across the street, and this year, we are on West Mendocino, on the street itself. And with any new location comes new challenges. One of the challenges that I've had is how to incorporate live music into the market space. Having local live music is very important and a tremendous benefit to the market as it enhances the shopper and vendor experience by providing a festive community atmosphere and a venue for local musicians to display their art. It has been observed by myself and vendors that having good live music can actually increase market sales and really helps out our vendors. And like I said, it's my responsibility to, as market manager, to select a location for the band within, in the market. Being that we're, the market is one long line down Mendocino Avenue from Main Street to the alley at the end of Rexall Parking Lot, the three obvious choices for me were on either end or in the middle. And when the market first started in May, I initially chose the far west end for a couple reasons. I wanted the music to not have to compete with vehicle traffic that was next to Main Street. Also, a lot of customers will sometimes sit and listen to the music while they're at the market, and so I wanted to place seating areas away from, again, the vehicle traffic on Main Street. And so that's when I put the band initially on the far west end towards the alley, which worked okay, except for I did get complaints from shoppers, vendors, and musicians that they could not be heard on the opposite end and could barely be heard in the middle. So after several weeks, I made the decision to relocate the band or the music area to a more central location in the center of the block. This allowed the band to be heard on both ends, and it also provided a shaded seating area for customers to sit and listen and enjoy the music. With the exception of one week last month, I feel that the volume and type of music that we've had has been very reasonable and very appropriate for the site. We're not trying to have concerts. It's intended to be, you know, background music to enhance the ambiance. And I feel having music in the more central location of the block actually allows the musicians, musicians to play at a lower volume as they don't have to project trying to be heard on the other side of the block. So I would ask that the city council allow the farmers market to continue to have music located in the center of the block and also to allow for amplified music. Amplification isn't just about volume. It impacts the type of, and variety of musicians that we can have. There are some musicians that require an amp and speaker for their instrument, such as the person who plays keyboard at the market. And he's actually one of the most popular and mellow, low-volume performers. And this is, and not having amplification directly impacts him. So I would also ask that the city council, again, allow us to have amplified music during the market hours. And I would be willing to work with council and staff if they wanted to come up with a decibel cap and that I could be able to enforce during the market. But just to, like to say, you know, ask that we could allow, have music in the middle of the block and have it amplified. And yeah, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on this. It's been a joy to be a market manager and help out the community. And so I hope that we can work together and resolve the issue of the music.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you spoken with the neighboring residents or businesses regarding your plans or what you want to do? And have you gotten input?
I've spoken with, when we initially chose the site, we did go down and speak to the businesses that are on West Mendocino from Main Street all the way down to School Street. All of them were very supportive of the market. The businesses on West Mendocino that are in the actual market zone have been very supportive of music and amplified music. And they are actually the ones who provide power for it. They allow us to run an extension cord from one of the businesses out to the market. So the businesses on the lower level have been very supportive. The very first week, we did receive a noise complaint from the law offices upstairs. And in response to that, I did ask the band to lower the volume, which they did. At the end of the day, a representative from the law offices actually came down and told us that the music was fine and that they would just close the window on, in previous weeks. So that's been my response, or that's been the feedback from the businesses there.
Other questions?
No, just that complaint that most of us are aware of. I know that I reached out to city manager, and she assured me that the city had addressed the complaint. And then I went myself and spoke to that person as well at the law office and found that in general, it wasn't an issue, except with one particular individual. Otherwise, the firm itself was supportive of the farmer's market.
Yes, we did. We have received two calls. One from Marie Blanca from Moon Lady. And she said that she does enjoy the music and she's fine with it. And Deborah Schwartz from New Image Hair Designs, she doesn't like the inconvenience because her elderly customers can't be dropped off. They're usually dropped off right at the door to get the haircut. And that does present a problem. The skateboarders bother her. And she said people are constantly asking to use her restroom. So those are the two that we received.
So may I respond to that? So in regard to that, I have spoken with Deborah. And that was actually another reason why I moved the music to the middle of the block was that she did complain about the band being on the west end, which is, was directly in front of her shop. And so moving, relocating the band to the middle of the block, I felt alleviated that and allowed for her customers to have greater access to her store. I'm working on the skateboarders and the other, and the other kids. And so that is, that's something that I check each week.
I own the book Chubbler downtown. And I will say, I've had a lot of people coming in just to use the bathroom from farmers market. And I have asked a couple of people, hey, you know, this is supposed to be for customers only. So it might be something you consider for future, having a porta potty available for your vendors as well as attendees. I mean, it is an impact on businesses if, you know, you have a lot of people coming in running water.
Thank you. Definitely, right now, I have been advising people that they are to use, if they ask for public restrooms, that they have restrooms behind busters that are public restrooms, as well as across the street in the video store. So that's actually where I direct them. But I could make better signage so that people are better aware of those options. Also, at the last market, I did have a petition at my stand for customers to sign and to affirm their support for the, for the market music. And so I have those, if I could submit those at the end as well.
And then I thought I saw in the circles of two that the band would be moving over into what was formerly the Rex Hall parking lot.
That was an option. I'm working on transitioning to incorporate the Rex Hall parking lot as part of the market. Right now, it's been quite a challenge as dealing with vehicles that don't, that don't move. And so we're not able to actually have vendors there because there are still cars parked there from the community. And I'm very reluctant to tow people. It's not what it's about. And so that was an idea that I had proposed. But for right now, it's the more just in the middle of the block in the current location on Mendocino Avenue is what I'm asking.
That's, that's what you had originally presented to me. It was in the Rex Hall parking lot. That's why I said that. I apologize. Didn't know that changed.
I have gone over to farmers markets just around the corner. And I find music to be an incredibly pleasant part of the market experience. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of adding amplification just because there have been noise complaints. And I mean, businesses are different. Some businesses require different levels of quiet. I do appreciate how flexible you're being though. And I appreciate the explanation of why you moved music to where it is. And you did mention that if we were to approve amplification, that you would be open to some kind of decibel level setting. I know at this point, we do have a noise ordinance, and the music has not violated that ordinance. It would be a shame to have one person's complaints sort of limit the joy for so many people who are attending the market. But I just would be, I just would be cautious to take it up a notch. I think, you know, it is important that farmers market respect the neighbors. And I feel you are doing that. But you just don't want to poke the bear.
Yeah. Kind of further to that, that comment is that I've attended a number of times. And I think when people hear the idea of amplified music, they think rock band, and they think, you know, really amped way up. And what you have been doing, and I'm assuming you would continue to do, is not that. It's to balance some of the instruments that are very, very quiet. Or an electric keyboard really doesn't sound like anything unless it has a little bit of amplification. And I know the U-bass is similar. It doesn't really hardly make any sound unless you have a little amp. So we're not talking about, you know, a loud concert. And I think that's really important, that it maintain that. It's, it's background music, and it's wonderful. And I applaud the farmers market for having live local music. It's just great. So I, I think as long as it continues in that, in that tradition, it's just great.
Did anybody else have questions? Otherwise, I will put it up to the public. I'm hoping to see if anybody else wants to speak. Come on up, state your name and.
My name's Carol Walker. I work for Brad Walton CPA. And I have the misfortune of having the catbird office. So you probably know that's a pretty dangerous intersection right there. People coming this way out of, say, the J.D. Red House area. They have a blind intersection. And then this way is a one-way street. And lots of people like to come into the Rex Hall parking lot the wrong way down the runway street, while these people are coming out that way. So it's, it's always a commotion there. And there's lots of honking and upset people, just on a regular day. And my office is right there. So, and yeah, I hear it all. So that's, you know, maybe I'm a kind of a bad case, the worst-case situation besides Mary Dixon in the legal office, because she's right over the farmers market. So she hears, it kind of reverberates in her office. When the drum circle, I don't know if this is part of the band or if it's... Well, first off, we all, we all like the farmers market, and we support the farmers market. We're just not sure it's in the right place. So this isn't really the band. It's the auxiliary people, the drum circles that start beating, beating, beating right outside your window while you're trying to talk to people on the phone. And they complain about it. Clients on the phone can hear the drums. They're, so when this is all happening at that intersection, especially when they're loading and they're in the red zone, and they're coming in the wrong way on the alley, and these people are trying to get out of the alley, there's just a lot going on there. There was an accident last week, not during the farmers market, but just coming out of the south side of the street. People just jet out of there. They can't see and they don't care. So that's the second accident I've seen there. We have increasing amounts of loose dogs and poop on our lawn there. And then we can't, the clients can't get to our office during the market hours. There's no place to park. The UPS, the payroll, you know, we have people dropping off and picking up constantly. And we just can't do it. And then we also have constant interruptions for use of our bathrooms. And it's kind of aggressive interruptions sometimes. And just, it just doesn't seem family-friendly as a location. Where do you put the kids? And it's just, I don't know. It just doesn't seem so great. And we have been talking to the manager and not complaining to the city manager. So I noticed that it said there's only been one complaint. And I just wanted, we didn't know that we should complain somewhere else. And I just wanted to say that the notice we got about this meeting had the wrong date on it. So I don't know.
I actually emailed Brad just because I knew you were there.
I was the one that called you.
Yeah. You were the only notice, because I just wanted to make sure that all business owners.
Oh, we were the only ones that got this notice?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then, I looked it up and saw that it was wrong.
Everyone else I had spoken to, and I wanted, and I knew I had not spoken to Brad's office. So I reached out.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so sorry.
That's really all I had to say. And I appreciate, and I just want to say that as an office, we love the farmers market. We just feel like maybe it should be in a park. But just our thought. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So let's just say for this season, let's just say that for now, if I had to put you on the spot, amplified or not amplified?
Not amplified. It's already amplified. It's just going to be more amplified. And really, if they were good, if they're, when it's good music, you like it. But when people are just banging on stuff outside your window and you're trying to work your numbers, it's, we just can't do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Don Willis. I play U-bass in the farmers market band. For those of you who have not seen our farmers market band that Richard Jeski leads, it's a small instrument. It's a ukulele, basically. It's a ukulele that is, has bass strings, strung like a bass, has a very quiet sound. In fact, if I'm playing next to Richard, he can hardly hear me if I'm not amplified. And if you add Tony's race with an accordion, which is not amplified, he blasts all of us out of the park. I mean, it's not really a difference between amplified and not amplified. I can amplify my bass and be, still be very quiet. Tony cannot. He cannot moderate the sound of his accordion. And I would say also that the drum circle, if you're talking about it, I don't know, you know, what the drum circle was, or I wasn't there. But chances are, that wasn't amplified either. It was just too loud. So I don't think the question is about amplification. I think the question is about volume. So I'd ask you to consider that as a criterion rather than amplification. I could not play at the farmers market if I was not able to plug in somewhere. I just couldn't do it. I wouldn't be able to be heard, and I would not be able to play.
So you haven't played?
I have played.
But not with?
Just low amplification.
With, no, I have. I have played and I plugged in.
Yeah, I mean, there are certain instruments that you can't hear at all unless they're plugged in. And like certain kinds of guitars, his bass. But you can put the amplification so low that it is at the same level as an acoustic instrument.
Last week, I brought, I brought an amp that was this big, and it worked on six AA batteries. And that's what I used. And that seemed fine. And I will do that if, you know, if the, if I can't plug in somewhere, I would do that. But it's still, it's still amplified. It's still boosting the sound. So you see the dilemma that I have. And I see that the, I just see how much people enjoy the music there. I, I see it because I'm standing there playing, and I see everybody walking by, and I see people bouncing to the music. And it's, it just brings the community presence up a notch to where you want it to be for a, for a farmers market. It really is pretty essential to have music. So that's my comment. I would ask you to just consider it as a noise level problem, not an amplification problem.
Anybody else? Oh, actually, behind you, she was.
My name is Barb Sicard, and I live down the lane. We, in the area that we live or work in is unique because all these buildings bounce the sound. So they don't seem so loud possibly to the people that are directly there making the sound. When you're over here and the noise is bouncing back and forth, it's very hard to deal with. Especially when you have someone who doesn't know how to play the drums, who is going full tilt. It's very disconcerting. And I agree with people that have said a better location could be found. And I, I don't know, I heard that you're making Mendocino on one way. And that's just more chaos into an area that's totally overwhelmed with people going the wrong way. And I think if we have amplified sound in the old Rex Hall parking lot, I guess it's going to be more problems. So I'm against it. And I think it is a noise level. And I don't know how you deal with that. And how do you deal with asking somebody not to come and do music outside of a group that has already signed up to do music? I like the farmers market, and I like the Mendocino when I'm not overwhelmed with it. Thank you.
Oh, actually, you know what? Richard, she was, she was there.
My name's Carol Gibson, and I work for Brad Walton. And when I first saw the notice for really amplified music, I just want to tell you that I was absolutely against it. My daughter's a musician. I'm familiar with amplifiers. And I just kind of feel that if it's amplified, it's going to cause more distraction for us trying to work because it's really hard, as enough as it is, to concentrate. My job requires a lot of concentration. And I'm dealing with people's financial information. So reflecting on all this, I actually would like to suggest, you know, I don't want to put down the music. I would like to suggest maybe if they want to amplify it, maybe they could do it from 5:00 o'clock on after business hours, you know, after people are finished with their workday. And then people can continue to enjoy the music. You know, it's not like hometown celebration in the farmers market. It's not where all the businesses are, you know, coming together to have a junk party or get together. You know, people are still continuing to work. I have a nine-to-five job. I can't, you know. I've been particularly leaving early on Thursdays because this has been such a distraction. The bathrooms is another issue. We, last week, we just had someone come to our door, who I know this is going to sound maybe crude, but they said they were with the farmers market, and their friend had diarrhea and vomiting, and they wanted to come use my restroom. And I had to look at him and say, I'm sorry, it's not available to the public. And I did suggest Pete Swanton's bathroom across the way, and that wasn't good enough. And I said, well, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do. I did speak with Francisco last week about the parking, and I actually saw him actively trying to keep vendors out of the red zone because it, you know, the employees and the business owners... the business owners have tried to park in the city parking lot to leave the street open for our customers and tourists. Since the farmer's market started, I've noticed all the vendors are just parking on the street because they see a wide open street. And I mean, why not? I probably would do it too. But they're continuing to park on the street and they're continuing to park all the way down to the red zone at the end of the Rexall, causing, you know, hazards for people trying to come in and out. They've also been parking in the alleyways, blocking, you know, obstructing traffic. And I just think it's a, it's an issue that should be considered. I would also like to suggest maybe moving into a different location, but I don't have, you know, to say or whatnot. So again, I would just like to say, I would like the amplified music moved to maybe five o'clock on and not totally down. And I do support the farmer's market. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Richard Jeski. I, um, I lead the Willis Farmer's Market Band and I also schedule all the music for farmer's market for the last several years. I think the, the farmer's markets are important. I think personally that that's the first place that people should shop during their week. And I think music is also an important part of farmer's market. It has been in Willis for the entire time that I can think of, which is over 20 years that there's been music at every market that we can. And I have probably played at more of those than anybody. I'm sure I've played at more of those than anybody else. I can't, I've been to almost every market and I can't think of a time when I thought the sound was excessive. Like Don said, we need an amplifier for his bass here just to be heard at all. And this is not rock and roll. You can, you can come to the market and there's never been a rock and roll band there. And maybe some people are particularly sensitive to drums, but I've never booked a drum circle at farmer's market either, so I don't know exactly what that is, what's going on. So I don't know how to sum this up except saying I think it's important. I don't think it's excessive in terms of volume. I think maybe some people maybe are, are more tuned into it and sensitive to it than others and not see the benefit of it. I could say that we live on East Hill Road next to the Vet and when the Fourth of July comes, we can hear the band in town. So I couldn't complain about that. And, you know, some, some travel is different ways sometimes, but as Don said, I don't think it's a matter of amplification. It's a matter of volume and being sensitive to the needs. I actually get more complaints from vendors and people who say they could not hear us well enough. I had, I don't, I can't think of a single time in our band, which is pretty acoustic, that anybody said we were too loud. So thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else? Him and then you.
I'll be quick. My name's Jukai Morrison. Frequent attendee to the farmer's market and I also appreciate the music that's provided, not only just for the farmer's market quality, but I think to Willis in general, shows that we have culture and we're not afraid to display it admirably. And it is, another question I have though is like, I just was going over to the burger joint here and came back and I noticed that there's a school of music. That's now where the guitar shop was. And I was just thinking hypothetically, sometimes we don't like to do that, but why could it have, you know, the possibility could exist, I could see it happening, that a music school could have opened up anywhere in the vicinity of these businesses. And they wouldn't be just one day a week, it would be all day, every day. And they would have to deal with that as a matter of business, just, you know, it's what business is sometimes, it's making music. And this is just an occasional thing that I know for a fact, people from far and wide thoroughly enjoy coming to our farmer's market to see the band and to, you know, also taking part of the delights that are there. So yeah, I'm hoping that, that we can reconsider, you know, being so hard on musicians here. Even with the amplification, I think it's a huge benefit, like the ukulele is, is very difficult to hear. And, you know, even sometimes when I've noticed some of the music isn't exactly my cup of tea, I really appreciate that people have the guts to get out there and put their flavor out there to the community and, you know, other people do thoroughly enjoy it. Heck, I think I'd tip them even just as much as anybody, whether it's my thing or not. So, thank you.
I'm Michael Foley and as you all know, I was market manager for several years until April this year. And I just wanted to underline how important music has been to the, to the farmer's market. Vendors and customers alike tell me this is the most enjoyable farmer's market in the county, has been for years. We may not be the most lucrative, but people enjoy, enjoy coming. And I think that's important. Like Don and like Richard, if there was a drum circle, I missed it. Obviously, there are some issues that need to be dealt with and I have every confidence that Francisco is gonna deal with them by talking to vendors about traffic issues and, and posting signs about public restrooms. And that's all, that's all important. The issue tonight is, is, is music. And I just wanted to add that for several years, four or five years, I helped manage a series of musical events at The Grange. There were always complaints and we did our best to accommodate people. Some of those, some of those complaints, we could accommodate really easily, others, the only way to accommodate was by canceling the events. And we, the, the events served a large public, just like the farmer's market. So, you know, we have to remember, we can't satisfy all the people all the time. Thanks.
Anybody else? Is that bringing it back up here?
I find this very difficult. I love the farmer's market. I walked around there on my break last week. I just thought it was beautiful, the colors of the vegetables, the flowers, the smiling faces, grandparents, grandchildren. It was lovely. It felt like a wonderful summer afternoon in a small town. But I also have great empathy for the neighbors and for the women at work. And I, I'm really torn. I think the idea to not have amplification, amplification until five seems very reasonable, but I also think Don's point of not being able to hear the ukulele is very reasonable. The whole sucky thing of politics is that somehow we have to find a compromise. Nobody gets everything they want. Everybody gets a little bit of what they want. So somehow I wish we could find that here. I, I'm struggling.
Well, I, I own a piece of property across the street and I had the farmer's market for several years at the park next to me. Was it an inconvenience at times? It was, but it was worth the inconvenience because I valued what the farmer's market was bringing to the area. I had challenges with people parking. I had challenges with people wanting an alternative bathroom. But overall, it was a pleasant experience and I was happy to see that it was there. But did it impact me and my neighbors? It did. I live on West Mendocino. I'm impacted by the farmer's market being there. Sometimes I have to remember on, on Thursdays, oh yeah, can't turn down that street. But again, my second thought is thank goodness, thank goodness that farmer's market is there and that when you come into our feet, into our community, you know that we value local produce. And so I think that that's important. I think the fact that you're only there for a few hours once a week, you can have a little bit of tolerance. I mean, I hear, I hear the games that happen at the high school. Does that mean I don't want Friday night football? No, not even football. But I can hear the games happening down there, so I have to have a little bit of tolerance. In my office, I work with kids every day and I can hear the noise outside the building. And I think about the people even at city hall who must hear the high decibel of the volume of them in their offices upstairs. I'm glad you don't hear it, but I know some people do.
Thank you.
And, and I know that it has an impact on them and that they're tolerant and I appreciate that. I can hear the rumbling of the trucks while I'm trying to concentrate coming down, coming down the road or the vehicles that will park on Main Street right in front of the building with their engine running and not realizing that it's shaking the whole building for the 15 minutes they're checking on their phone. Or we have to be tolerant because we're across the street from the fire department. So every time those wonderful people get a call, it, it affects our day. So we all have to have a little bit of tolerance. I empathize with you, but I also value what the farmer's market brings to our community and I'm appreciative of that. For that, I can be inconvenienced. And I would, and I would hope that we could all find, find some middle ground. I'm okay with the amplification because I feel like in some cases it's warranted and I don't think that they're going to raise the volume with the amplification. If it, the volume goes up or the city wants to set a certain decibel, that's fine, but I would hate to see farmer's market change to a later hour or be moved altogether. You've moved way too many times and I think that you've found a spot that represents that we value farmer's market as a business in our community. We shouldn't have to tuck you away on some side street. Or honestly, you're gonna impact somebody else.
Can I make a suggestion? Just throw something out there, just from what you said and thinking aloud. So we don't have a decimal meter at the city. However, when you have to judge these sort of things in my position, you, you look at, is it the same tone as, and then you, you have examples. And for me, it's conversational conversation. And that's basically what I've been judging it at. If I can have a normal conversation and it's basically at the same level as the music, amplified or not, I'm comfortable with it. And that, and I know that that's under any limit. Drums are a different story. I have not heard the drums. There may be a drum limitation is in order because that, that can absolutely be over a decimal limit. But I am very sympathetic as a musician myself. I have a cigar box guitar. You cannot play it without some, without plugging it in, but I will, but it is much lower at a low level than an acoustic guitar. And so it's not about the amplification sometimes, it's about just the level. So if you want to talk maybe about layman's standards of level of, of sound of like a normal conversation, a, maybe that's where you can shape your discussion or think about it, maybe that would help.
Harry, you're matched. Do you want to comment?
Yes. I think that the farmer's market is really a good thing and I enjoy the music. I'm not that good on hearing, so I have to turn my hearing aids up or down and then I can adjust the sound that comes out. But we had the farmer's market next to us, not right at Pete's building on the records, was the next door to us. And I, I enjoyed it. And we had some things that we had to negotiate with that and we worked things out. And I thought that that's what we need to do with this. We need to actually get down and, you know, be able to, I mean, it's a small community. I mean, if somebody's rapping on a drum, you go over, go over and tell them that they need to tone that down, that, you know, that it's bothering people. And I just think it's a good thing. I enjoy it.
I kind of already said it, but I, I totally support the farmer's market. I know that they've had to move several times and for right now, at least, this is the venue that they have and it's working and it's really central to the community to participate and the music is a big part of it. And I think that the question is really, you know, the volume, not whether an amplification is used because the amplification that has been, in fact, already used, is very much within a civil limit for, you know, for people to continue to have conversations and to interact with the vendors and, you know, the people that would really get upset if it was too loud would be the vendors. Nobody could, you know, how much? You know, that isn't happening. The, the music is very respectful and it's, and it's wonderful to have it. So, and it is once a week, you know, limited hours. I do realize that that can be inconvenient for some people that are right there. And maybe over the longer term future, we keep looking at sites that have fewer conflicts, but they don't, it's a pretty darn good location right now. And I think I'd like to support allowing the level of amplification that just makes it possible for the quiet band to keep playing in balance with each other. There's a plugin for the bass or a plugin for a keyboard that keeps the same level. It doesn't, you know, keep upping the, the sound level. That would bother me, but I think that's fine. And I also, I've never experienced a drum circle there. I do think that would be very disruptive to businesses even a block away. I mean, I think that's, that's a whole, that's a different question.
What do you want to say, sir?
So the report asks that we give staff direction on whether amplification would be allowed if farmer's market moves into the Rexall lot. But it sounds to me like what we're asking now is if they can just allow amplification at low levels now, as is where they are. Is that correct?
Yes.
So can someone make a motion? I mean, I feel like.
Is that gonna work for you guys?
Sure.
Because I, I think, I think like my colleagues have said, it's a give and take kind of thing. I mean, also, it looks like you guys have heard that there are other issues that you need to look at so you can be good neighbors. And I, I empathize with you guys. I didn't get a chance to call. I did call in Harry's office and he seemed supportive and said some of his staff had some issues and so. So again, I, I, I might be willing to support this, but I kind of don't want to be back here at the end of the season to hear that, you know, you guys didn't do what we asked, so I figure.
And just to help me, because I'm the one who goes over there and makes sure, when I get a complaint or I go over and listen to it and if I could get some guidance from you all, what you think is appropriate, that helps me. Generally, I'm, you know, if I can have a conversation with a person, and I'm a pretty quiet talker, and it's not bothering me, we can have a conversation. And that is actually how it's always been. That has been my experience every time I've gone over there, is that it has been a, a normal conversational tone. The one complaint I have received said her windows were rattling. That is very hard for me to imagine. I did not observe that. That's not to say it didn't happen, I just have not observed that. But what I have observed has been low levels of amplification. So if that's okay, I think I can manage that if that is what you choose to do. But again, it's.
Do we need a motion for that?
I, I need you to tell me what to do.
Is there some motion for giving directions?
Any direction. Staff, staff needs direction here.
So you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow the farmer's market music to use limited levels of amplification for achieving a balance of sound and that the sound be at a low enough decibel level that people can continue to have conversations in the vicinity of the area.
And we're empowering our city manager to take that.
Yes.
I'm taking notes.
Can we add to your motion something about increased signage for restrooms?
Yes, I was gonna mention that, that is.
I don't know if we need to add that to the motion. I feel they've heard that.
Would you like to prohibit drums?
I think that's a fair argument.
Well, you know, I know that you, you play drums, but it's extremely sensitive, quiet drums, like a little.
Prohibit more than one.
So if you start saying prohibit drums, but I do know when you get a whole bunch of Congo players out there, that is, so, and that, that violates the nature of the motion. The motion is you can continue to have a conversation. So therefore, a drum that's, that'll, fine, you know.
The council frowns on drum, drum circles.
The council just requests that farmer's market and all the musicians work to respect the neighbors. And I, I believe you all do, but you've now heard from people who aren't perhaps more sensitive than you realized and, and I think that you'll all take that into advisement.
Can I say something even though we're not in public time anymore? One of the things that's confusing is that we feel like we're doing that.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's confusing to get this information that for some other people And so it's confusing to get this information that for some other people, that's not their experience of it. You know, they're the opposite of Larry with the hearing thing.
May I clarify the drum circle? I wasn't speaking of actual drums. I was speaking of people banging on things outside my window and chanting.
Maybe that's something you could police.
That has anything to do with the musician.
Oh, okay.
People being rowdy.
Spontaneously.
I know, it's hard as a manager, you're probably dealing with different things, but maybe appoint somebody, go around, make sure that they're not... Because it's basically kind of, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater because it's...
Someone throw the drum part out.
Yeah.
We had, I made a motion, did someone second?
I'll second, sure.
All right.
Was the motion clear?
All right. Any further discussion? If not, Kathy, the vote.
Councilor McConney.
Yes.
Red Reagan.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming in. Looks like you guys have direction.
I appreciate the help.
Consent calendar. The following items are recommended for approval or denial. City council minutes. May 14th, May 22nd, June 4th, budget workshop, June 4th, special meeting, June 18th, special meeting, June 26th is a resolution accepting construction completion of the 2019 pavement preservation project, authorizing the filing of a notice of completion, resolution authorizing amendment one to professional service agreement with Dean Fuller for building inspection services, and resolution awarding contract to Diamond Deconstruction and not to exceed amount of $56,409.65 for the construction of the watershed slip-out project.
I had one question. I don't think it requires taking it off the agenda, but I think it was on the Dean Fuller, but my computer just, it did. But I think it talks about $15,000, and then there's a place where it's $20,000. Is the $20,000, the $5,000 was already allocated, plus, is that...
So, yeah, that's a great question. So what happened is, we hired Dean Fuller when John Sherman left fairly quickly, and so we pulled Dean Fuller in. It was a very small contract, and we had him on board, we had a contract going. When Christopher Morgan came on, he left with very little notice, and we said, "Ah, we have a contract already, great, let's bring Dean Fuller back on." We didn't really look at it, and it turns out, we had something to go on it, and so we actually exceeded the $5,000. But now we want him to keep going a little bit, so the five, so we've already spent some, the total amount of money that will be spent on Dean Fuller is $20,000. And we've already spent, I'm guessing, about 10. Is that right, Dusty?
Ten or 12.
Ten or 12. And so we're actually asking for, to approve what we've already spent, and we've, actually, I had to talk to the mayor about it, should we run back to council to get that approved? He said, "Why don't you wait till the next meeting?" We sort of agreed on that because it wasn't very much, and we needed him, obviously. And we needed to continue the continuity of services while, when Christopher left. And so this is sort of this additional amount to bring our new code enforcement officer, our new building inspector into... He is, he is great. He's actually, couldn't make it to this meeting, he's going to come to the next meeting, and Dusty's going to talk about him. But he's, Dean Fuller's going to continue with some of the more complicated inspections. And we also have a very small contract with John Sherman to also do complicated inspections on some work that they've already familiar with, especially in the more complicated cannabis fields.
And so that one's already done?
Yeah, that was a small contract that didn't need your...
So I just wanted that clarified, and I'm fine with moving approval.
I have a question about item B, the pavement preservation project closeout. I actually, I mentioned this to Stephanie this morning, I can't remember the exact timing of it, but sometime after the pavement preservation was done on School Street, there was a project done, I thought I saw a city truck there on the parking area in front of the Grange on School Street, and it led to now the creation of two large potholes. And it was a lovely surface for about two weeks, and now if there are two cars coming, the person heading northbound goes boogum into those.
I just did it today.
They did it today?
I drove it.
Oh, you drove it, okay.
Yeah, they have a wire service that popped. It wasn't even two weeks, it was a week after we did it.
Will we be able to fix that?
I mean, well, we're going to, we're going to have to go with patches. Next time we get the infrared machine out, that'll be a spot.
Okay, okay.
We had another spot on Alice Street, too. We picked good mains, but we can't tell what the surfaces are going to be.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
And it is sort of like a Murphy's Law in municipal government, that as soon as you pave a street, you will need to do streetwork underneath it unexpectedly directly afterwards.
Yeah, I just brought to mind that on Mill Creek Drive, I have roofing done, and the roofers were going in and out of my driveway. Anyway, there's already some, you know, irregularities in the new pavement because of heavy truck use of it. And it does seem like, as a pavement preservation project, I would have expected it to be more durable than that.
It's sensitive to the big trucks turning on it, but it also, it unravels a bit for like six months, and you'll see stuff come up, and then, you know, you won't see it anymore after a while. It wears out. I've driven it, I've seen it, there's odds, but if you notice just the surfaces that are driven on a lot, you know, they look very smooth, so I think it might just be noticeable.
Can you come up here so Tia can hear what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think actually, it evens out a little after you've driven on it more, like especially up Northbrook and Mill Creek. You notice that the center of the road actually looks pretty smooth, but then on the sides, it's like a little gravelly. I think, I think more traffic actually gets some of that granular stuff off of it, so I think it's still okay. I mean...
But it'll be something that we'll watch.
Yeah, I mean, this is our first run with that type-two slurry. From what I can tell, they put it down right, so I, you know, I have confidence that it's going to turn out okay. But they did warn us that, you know, at first, some of that aggregate comes off, and it, you know, it takes a little while to wear down.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes. On the consent calendar, item B, to authorize the contract amendment for professional services. And I also want the council to authorize amend 1920 budget to move the salary savings for the building official position to the other contract accounts. Because we got to pay it from some account, we can't pay it from salary. It had to be contract accounts. So that's either be added on.
So that's the Dean Fuller item?
The 5C.
That's the Dean Fuller item.
So, shall I move it?
Do we need to pull that and then make the change?
You can.
Yeah, so, let's, can I get a motion on items A, B, and D, and then move?
I shall move.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, item C, resolution authorizing amendment to professional service agreement with Dean Fuller for building inspector services. And what you're saying is we, as part of that, we need to...
Amend 1920, adopt the budget, move salary savings from building official position to contract service accounts, which is building of code enforcement, other contract accounts. That's actually on the budget book, page 231.
Okay. So I have approval of item 5C with that amendment?
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if I recall reading it, it said that there were going to be any fiscal impact in the total dollars that were spent, I just wanted some verification that we're still within budget.
Yeah, the total savings between the building officials and building inspectors, those are actually a calculated $23,200. So this is within that, 20,000 is under $23,000. So we can move $20,000 out of the salary benefit line item to the other contract accounts. We can pay, you know, for building contracts.
So it's within the budget?
It's within the budget, but under $3,000 actually.
Under $3,000?
Yeah.
And just so you know, when Stephanie got ahold of me, the idea was I didn't want to delay any building, and the thought of trying to put together a special meeting, in fact, I wasn't around, I thought it was better just for the sake of expediency for the community to move forward than we would do today, so... All right. So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Kathy, it involves money, so...
Councilor McConney.
Aye.
Red Reagan.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, June.
Well, the other one involves money, too.
Oh, well, remove money from the budget. All right. Item 6, information reports. We have building inspector activity reports for June 2019. Item 7, persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have a right to a review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Item 8, commissions and agencies. The Willett City Council meets concurrently with the Willett City Planning Commission and the Willett Successor Agency, and I don't think we have anything, so... Item 9, city manager reports and recommendations.
Yes, Stephanie Gilbert Sierra, city manager. I wanted to give a quick update on the city's preparations and meetings regarding the planned safety shut-offs for PG&E. I know that we've been hearing a lot about that and sort of wondering what the city's doing, and I want to make sure that city council is informed of what we're doing and how we're doing it on a regular basis. We've had several meetings involving PG&E, just these last, and obviously PG&E came and gave a presentation here. We had an open house with PG&E. I attended a meeting with both Lake County's officials and Mendocino County officials in Kelseyville last week, which PG&E was in attendance. I also convened a grouping of community stakeholders within the Willetts community, just a few, I believe it was last week, and some things, we had some takeaways from that, and what we mainly wanted to do is make sure that we were on the same page as who was doing what, who was in charge of what, and we understood how we were operating, and what PG&E has been telling us has been pretty consistent. The, I think the main takeaways that we had from our stakeholders meeting was some, just some basic information that this council has asked before, and that is, you know, what's going to happen with the city? First of all, we are trying to secure generators. We have not been able to do the electricity yet, but we are planning to try to operate as normally as possible in the city hall. And although we are not going to have air conditioning, and we will not be able to be a cooling center, the electric capabilities of this building and hooking up a generator has proved a little difficult, so that is sort of the last on the list of city hall. But sewer and water is absolutely expected to be able to run indefinitely, and that we're very comfortable with. The police, the justice center is good to go. It already has a generator, it is actually, has enough fuel for weeks and weeks, and so we're very good with the justice center. City hall, we're working on, just because this is an old building, and it's going to cost some money to wire it up to a generator. In terms of a cooling center, when we asked our various other government entities who's up for that, the school district said that they have the capability to provide a cooling center at the high school, and so, and they're absolutely ready to do that. The school will not be in session during a PSPS. Well, we're trying to remain normal, they just can't do the kids and everything during a PSPS, so the school is not going to be in session. In talking, we talked to all of our hospital partners. This meeting was actually at Howard Hospital for people with oxygen. They stressed that people with oxygen really need to have a plan. Their first line of response is to be dealing with their own durable medical providers. The, in cases of emergency, of course, our Little Lake Fire Department is going to be there. They're concerned about their capabilities to refill oxygen. The hospital is going to be available for police, for fire to be able to refill their oxygen, and they, but what is overarching and kept being reminded is that a PSPS, a public safety power shut-off, it is not a disaster and it is not an emergency. And this is simply, this is a planned event created by basically a private entity, PG&E, or a public utility, rather, and it is, because of that, none of the regulations that sort of get relaxed in times of disaster, none of those get relaxed. So this is something that people need to plan for, and we, it's all about notification. PG&E has a variety of different ways to notify people. They are on the hook for notifying people. The counties and the various cities are leaving it to PG&E for all of the notifications, because they are the ones capable to do it, because it's their utility customers, and we don't have that capability. Counties are saying, "No, they're not doing it. This is not their event, this is PG&E's event." And they're being very, "No, this is sort of not, we didn't create this, PG&E created this." There's also concern about liability issues and things like that. That's why it's, this is PG&E's duty. They have been working very hard to get people signed up, to make sure that all the portals are there, to make sure that people are notified. They have for baseline users, and those are people who are medically sensitive, who are subscribers to the baseline PG&E. They are doing extra efforts to contact those people. In case of a PSPS, what they're doing is they're going to do the normal alerts, both by email and texting and that sort of thing. If they do not receive a response from baseline customers, they will be knocking on their doors. And I've been assured of that. The question has gone out, what about medically sensitive people who aren't on baseline? Those are folks we need to get to now to say, "Hey, be aware and look out for your neighbors," because we don't, there's no way to know who those people are, actually. So Howard Hospital's going to be open, they're going to be open for business, they have generators. All of the Adventist Health Hospitals will be open for business, except for elective If you need to plug into a ventilator or something to stay alive, and you do not have a ventil, you do not have a generator, it's an emergency room situation, and their emergency rooms will be open, and that is what they have done before. And so they are perfectly prepared for that. We talked about, the other agency that wants to provide cooling center is the senior center. They are trying to provide, they are trying to secure backup generators for the senior center. They want to provide cooling station, and they would also like to provide meals for people, and just sort of the same meal service that they provide now. They want to continue to do that. The, you can do, oh, the other thing that we decided to do, because there's a lot of question on which businesses will be open, what will be available, city hall staff, when they're available, we do have a student intern, we've been calling everybody with a business license to find out who's going to be open during a PSPS, and to what extent they're going to be open, and what kind of services are going to be available. We're putting together a spreadsheet on all the businesses, who's going to be open, what kind of services they can provide. For example, Brown's Corner is going to be open, does that mean they're going to be open for groceries? Are they going to have ice? Are they going to have gas? So we're developing that. When that is complete, we're going to put that on our website, and so that people can have a resource to find out. Landlines should be operational, all phone landlines should be operational. If you have the ability, if you're, cell towers will be open, it won't affect the internet. You will need some sort of a power source for your modem to be able to use the internet, but that should not be interrupted, modem services. City internet should be up. The county has assured us that they're ready to do that. We just need to get our generators together, and we're still struggling with that, frankly. We are, as PG&E is putting out, they have quite a number of different flyers, sort of checklists of what you should have, generator safety, things like that. I had asked for PDFs of those, so as we get them, we can put them on our website as a resource, and they're not just available from PG&E. they're not just available from PG&E, but they're also available for the city. There's a lot of information on the PG&E website. There's a lot of information with the CPUC website. Those are good resources, and we encourage people to tell everybody. I have, personally, had to receive so many notices, but yet we have all run into people who say, what? What's that? And so, we really need to reach out to our neighbors. This is a small community, and a lot of it depends on just telling your neighbors and looking out for one another, because it's, you know, we're going to be faced with basically a little in-home camping. So if you have any questions on what we've done, I'm glad we had our community meeting. We met, the fire department was there, Brook Trails was there, some elder care homes were there, the hospital was there, Batel Creek Medical Clinic was there. We just tried, we put our heads together and say, okay, we're covering our bases. And we all have a list. We all have each other's information, and we all have a good idea of what sort of we're all doing. The information center is always going to be city hall. If people come from there, because that's traditional. Everybody wants to come to the city to find out what's going on. For cooling centers, though, we're going to direct them to the high school.
Thank you for holding that stakeholder meeting. I got positive feedback about how you led the meeting and just really the content of the meeting and what happened from that, and lots of kudos to you.
I really appreciate it.
It was something that's been weighing and worrying about whether we were taking a lead role, and people came away from it saying that the city did take a leadership role in that, so, thank you.
I think that we're, I don't know if we're leaders. We are partners. We have a lot of partners, and I really trust the partners that were at that table are good partners. I felt really good, and Howard Hospital was, look, we're going to be there. We can't tell you exactly what we're doing, because it's going to shift depending on what the needs are, but we are here for the community. And to hear that statement from them was really, really positive, so I have, I have great hopes. And if you don't know how to camp, great chance to learn. Go to, you know, your local camping store. There's one here in Watts, and find out all the great gadgets you can use for your convenience.
And I know Aura was here with the PG&E Heather little thing here last week, and I think Sabrina, you were there, and it wasn't as well attended as I thought it was going to be, but there were some businesses there asking some good questions. There were members of the pub, there were people there from Laytonville asking questions.
The thing I, the thing I was disappointed about, I mean, I was happy that they had the tables where you could go, but honestly, I thought there was going to be more of a group presentation where we could get, we could get more in-depth information rather than just walking around. That was great, but I would have loved to see them interact with us a little more, and I think that the reason they didn't is because they had difficulties with the county and then with Ukiah, and I felt like as a council member, we didn't really have a chance to sit in the audience and maybe ask some valuable questions.
Well, but I got to tell you, I think I told Aura this, that there were some folks that asked the same thing there, but at the same time, I told a couple people, you know what? There's some PG&E people. You know, in a public setting, you might be reluctant to ask questions. Go grab one and ask away, and that's kind of what some of the businesses were doing. They were, they had specific questions, and those people from PG&E, they couldn't answer. They went and grabbed one of the guys that could, and these guys were all PIO kind of guys. These aren't the decision makers. These are the guys that go out and spread the word. Like I explained to them, I may have some issues with PG&E corporate or something that maybe as taxpayers, we should talk to the PUC about, but, but these guys were just trying to spread the word as far as the, and a lot of their paperwork they had there was being picked up, and, you know, they wanted to get the word out on, if you got generators, you know, that kind of stuff, know what you're doing, and that aspect of it. Yeah, maybe it would have been great to do another town hall with them, but they, I told people, there you go. Grab one of those people. One of the businesses, I grabbed her, and I said, she wants to ask a question. I have questions, but I'll wait. She wants to ask away, and she, and they moved her over to somebody else. I said, this is your opportunity. You might not get again, so take advantage of it. So I, I just wish there had been more people there. Then it might have been more apropos to say, hey, guys, they're going to give a presentation, but at this point with, it kind of felt like going to a mixer as opposed to a presentation that people got to ask questions, so. And I think the more information that we can keep sending out at all levels, and like Stephanie said, I still run into people saying, yeah, what is that? And I'm like, are you serious? Have you been living under a rock or what? And, and some people just check out when the time comes, or they think the government's going to save them. And I've been trying to tell them, you need to kind of have a plan, and so that's my big one.
And an interesting thing about, I got a call today from somebody who lives in Ukiah who said, I haven't gotten no notices. And I called, and so I called actually our PG&E representative and said, what's up with that? You know, this person thinks that she's not getting notices and that she's not in an area, but she works here. And she's, he said, she said, remember that Ukiah is not a PG&E customer. Ukiah has their own power, so they are going to take care of their own notifications. So if you run into somebody from Ukiah, they shouldn't be expecting notifications from PG&E. It's going to come from Ukiah. So I kept complaining about that.
And actually, the folks at the PG&E presentation also said that these aren't just happening in the PG&E area, but also in Edison down south and a couple other places where it's, and they were quick, and some of the material looks like it was made for the-
The combination, yeah.
Yeah, all the different power companies had contributed, so I got that impression.
I think at the last meeting, I gave everybody a copy of the Ukiah city notice to their customers, because you're right, they are the electricity provider, but it still comes through PG&E lines, and they are still subject to PSPS.
Yeah.
Because if PG&E lines go down, Ukiah goes down. So they are notifying their customers as best they can.
And maddeningly, it's not just if a PSPS event happens in our county will we get shut off. There may be a time when there is a, the conditions exist in Lake County, but if those transmission lines that come to us come through Lake County, we're going to be shut off just because Lake County is experiencing that event, which is going to drive people crazy. Chris, would you like to come to the podium? I saw you there.
Counsel, Chris Wilks, Fire Chief for Little Lake Fire District. You know, as we've said before, and you made a great point, this isn't supposed to be an emergency situation for us on the public safety power shutdowns. Literally, the city's gearing up, the fire department's geared up to have generators so we can do normal business, state-of-day business. The fear with our fire district is we have thousands of people now that are purchasing generators from your local farm supply or local place that's going to plug into their houses because they don't have power. Now inadvertently, in fear that we're going to create wildfire with PG&E lines going down, we're going to put generators that are filled with gasoline in people's homes that don't normally use that kind of product. They don't, I doubt we're seeing any, I shouldn't say I doubt we're seeing any, I don't know if we're seeing any building permits for electricians to go out to install transfer switches in houses to properly use a generator for hookup. So now we've put electrical problems in people's homes that they're backfeeding electrical panels. They're filling their generators while they're running because they don't want to shut them off because their TV's on with gasoline where these generators are being used. So quite honestly, my fear isn't the incident of a power safety, public safety power shutdown being the cause of a disaster. It's what's, what we've inadvertently done with the people when we've shut the power down. So just to be, just to be clear, I would think people should be prepared, but push hard for the generator safety or any other products they may be using in their home while the power's shut down. That's, that's my fear. That's my fear. If you look at, if you look at vegetation fires that we have in the area, they're usually human caused, either by a vehicle fire or a structure fire moving into the wildland. If somebody has a generator that they buy for 500 bucks from the local farm supply, if it's super loud, it's 100 yards away from the house with an extension cord hooked to an extension cord, hooked to an extension cord into their home, and they go out and fill it out there, that 100 yards away, or maybe not that far, but. So those are the fears with the fire district. I, in a weird sort of way, I feel like shutting down the power and the use of all the generators in people's homes has increased our fire danger in our area. That's my position on the public safety power shutdowns, and hopefully we don't have that happen. We are prepared. We do feel like in the city, we are going to have the little medical type emergencies. There are emergencies for people within the community that we're willing and able to deal with, but I'm still worried about a big fire in the middle of a power, public safety power shutdown due to lack of knowledge of using the right utility for the home or wiring correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
The other thing I had wanted to touch on that I forgot to, is I have seen in local hardware stores more and more solar operated things. So that is also another option besides the generators, is also solar powered. You can run a cellphone. You can run all sorts of things from a solar panel that you can buy from your local hardware store from, in Willetts, California. There's also a solar center actually in Hopland that has a number of really interesting things that you can run off of.
There's also a great link to generator safety on the PG&E website, and I think any of us who have Facebook pages should post link that. I did get feedback from several residents that that was a very helpful link, so.
Yeah, and that was their concern too, Chris, when they were here. They were, in fact, you were there too, but they had the same things, and they said that they would be available on the website, so. All right. Anything else, Stephanie?
Nope.
All right.
Oh, actually, I have a few, just little tiny items. Number one, we had a donation, kind of a donation. One of our Public Works folks, Kenan, his wife works with the county. She was able to get a lot of bicycle helmets. So all of our Public Works folks have bicycle helmets for kids in their trucks, and when they see kids riding on their bicycles without helmets, they're going to be giving out free bicycle helmets.
Oh, right.
Which is so exciting. When we see them at the skate park, we're going to give out those out too. So really kudos to Kenan and his wife for doing that. I think that's great. Next week, very exciting, Dusty and I are going to be meeting with the head of the California Conservation Corps, Bruce Sato, about their plans for the CCC, the new CCC facility here in Willetts that is going, that is, he is, they are so excited to build their facility here, and we're going to learn more about their plans next week, and we'll bring that back to you to see, to show you, and they're excited to talk to you too about their plans. Bike station, repair station, it was in my newsletter. It's right across from city hall. It was a donation from Walkin' Bike Mendocino, when our Public Works folks actually installed it. I, they assured me, it has little wrenches and screwdrivers and a bike tent punch and all these things, and they're attached by cables, and they assured me that they're theft proof. No one's going to be able to steal anything. Of course, the first week, that wrench was stolen, and I was so sad. But the good news is that about two weeks later, some random person said, I know that this belongs to the bike station and it's yours. And so our Public Works crew is reinstalling it, and I have my faith renewed in humanity. Last note, I'm going to be off this Thursday and Friday taking care of my folks, and they've got some issues in Las Vegas, so I will not be here Thursday and Friday, and Kathy Moorhead will be acting in my stead. That's all I've got.
All right. Item 10, department recommendations. Information update on City of Willetts grant activities. Is it Dusty and Jim thing?
Kind of a everybody thing.
City of Willetts thing.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, council members. Dusty Dooley still enjoying serving the council and the community as your community development director. Let's start by saying that Jeremy and I heard the community loud and clear, and we'll be moving our outlaw pots and pans kitchen van somewhere else. Chris Wilks is our manager. If you want to hire us, you go through him. He only takes 80% of our gig money, so.
Kazoo's only, mister.
I've been told that's a pretty good deal. This is an informational update on the City of Willetts grant activities, and what I'm going to enjoy doing right now is really showcasing the hard work and success of my colleagues. There's a camera there, a pan, second row from the back. We have our engineering department. There's Andrea Trincato, Jeremy Ronco, Suzanne Lutis, and Mr. Jim Robbins, somewhere.
No, I'm a specialist. He moved on me.
Very good. He somehow knew that was coming. But within the last year and a half or so, the city has secured over $7 million in grants, and this funding has supported projects that, for the most part, the city could not otherwise have afforded to complete. You do have a full list of our grants in the attachment A of the report, but I do want to just briefly highlight on a few of those. One is our CalFire Proposition 68 Urban Forestry Management Grant that we received. What we get to do with this is plant as many trees as we can find space for on Main Street. This is part of our Main Street beautification efforts. That certainly was a high priority identified by the council. It also allows us to create an urban forestry management plan where we can get an understanding of the current condition of our trees, as well as what resources we need to take care of them moving forward. The other project I want to highlight is our Caltrans ATP Rails with Trails project. Having a recreational trail along the railroad corridor has been at least a decade-long goal of the city and was a major accomplishment to obtain over $6 million in grant funding to construct the trail, and it's going to be even a bigger accomplishment for us to build the trail and then maintain it in the future. We are getting ready to secure our first round of funding to pay for the environmental phase of that, and to follow up with council member Rod Regus. He was interested in kind of understanding approximately how much hours of staff time will be spent on this potentially seven-year-long project versus the amount of hours that the consultants or hired help would be doing. And this is just an estimate, but it was the best I could do with, with looking at it for a little while. We're looking at about 2200 hours of staff time and over 25,000 hours of consultant time.
25,000?
Again, this is over a six or seven-year span, and I think we've tried to quantify throughout the report an estimate on total staff time and following through on these projects. Another big project that we are successful in securing was the DWR Flood Emergency Response Grant. The state's mandating that we complete updated dam inundation maps for both our Centennial and Morris Dam. This is something that the state does not give us money for, but they certainly ask us to do it. It included money for emergency response training, as well as money to update our flood emergency response plan, which is part of our emergency operations plan. Again, emergency preparedness is another identified priority for the city, and certainly securing grants to fund unfunded state mandates is a strong fiscal strategy. We also have over, we have three other grant proposals that we've submitted. The total over 5.3 million. We're waiting to find out if they were chosen for funding. One is to replace the East Valley Street Bridge. That grants for over $4 million. This again was identified as one of the top priorities in the goal-setting exercise that the council completed. We also have a grant through Department of Water Resources to establish adequate groundwater supply, resources to supply the city in case of a drought or other emergency. Water supply reliability and resiliency in an emergency is an important safeguard and is also another priority identified by the city. Further, we have a grant out to help pay for removing brush and hazardous trees around the airport. The state has alerted us that the city could face fines and potential interruption of airport operations if we failed to take care of some of the hazardous trees around the airport. We have made progress on that. We have gotten an attaboy letter from the state. Certainly, we have more work to do, but we're hoping to secure additional funding to complete that work. And again, maintaining operation of the airport and avoiding fines from the state is another priority for the city. With that, I want to get into a brief discussion on what we look for when considering grant funding for a project. This is in the staff report, but we certainly look to see if the project is a good fit for the funding source. We look to see if the project will be competitive in the grant competition, and then if it does meet that criteria, then it becomes a matter of determining whether we have staff resources available to successfully implement and manage the project. And I want to emphasize that part. I think you've heard me particularly mentioning in the past that, that we need to start moving from grant writing to a higher focus on grant management. grant writing to a higher focus on grant management. We have been successful in obtaining grants for these high priority projects, but we now need to shift our resources from the grant acquisition to the grant management. Managing too many projects will generally lead to poor outcomes and can harm the city's reputation with grant sources and outside partners. We're taking other people's money. We promised them that we're going to build this project. If we don't make sure to allocate enough staff time and reserve our time to follow through on those projects, we're going to fail. And if we fail, I would not expect to be successful in retaining grant funds in the future. So part of what I'm asking for with this report is council and community support and understanding to allow us to have the time to move forward with the projects that we have at hand, which only make up a fraction of our actual overall job responsibilities. Looking at the projects that we've, the main projects that we've secured, we're estimating over 5,300 hours of staff time, most of that within the next probably year and a half. And I would say that looking at the engineering time specifically for the Rails with Trails project, that's probably even a little underestimated. So that 5,300 may be low, but it's certainly not high. And, you know, I just want to add that it's only because of the skills and dedication of your staff that we're even able to take on the projects that we've identified already. So that doesn't mean that we won't go after other grants such as purchasing generators to support critical infrastructure. And it doesn't mean that we won't continue to prioritize projects that are most important to the city and upon completing existing projects, seek funding for those projects. So that's what I share and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for not only going after these grants and securing these monies, but thank you especially in your presentation tonight for tying in what has been accomplished to goals set by the council and helping the community see the value of what's already on the table. Sometimes people think, I mean, I've heard it, I'm sure we've all heard it, well, we should get a grant for that. We can get, it's so easy. We can get money for this, we can get money for that. It's not that easy. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to implement those grants and to make those projects become reality. So I appreciate you making clear how that ties into what we've already said we're aiming for. It's very helpful.
Anybody else?
What are you looking for?
I'm just looking to see if anybody else has questions of Dusty before I move on.
This is an informational report, so.
Yeah, no actions.
And I agree with Greta's comments. I just think it's really impressive that we've been able to obtain these grants and that our staff are noble and they're working their butts off to keep up with the work that we got rid of us. Thank you for all your dedication.
And I see where you're going after one for the bridge, but we're having to give back money that we got at some point that we, probably, that's an example of where you don't, I guess, don't do what you need to do to keep that money or whatever, I'm assuming, so. And hopefully this time around, we'll be able to get that bridge done. And so, again, I want to echo that I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing. It's easy sometimes to get some grants, but then the reporting requirements, there are a lot of times where with the police department, I didn't go for grants and people would say, well, they're giving it away. I'd go, they're never just giving it away. There's something you have to do, public meetings, or you have to do this owner's reporting and sign into federal systems and that kind of stuff. And then somebody's got to do that documentation. And sometimes you have to come up with, you know, it's not just the guy writing the grant, but it's finance that gets bogged down. It's the boots on the street that have to actually go and inspect things. And so all of a sudden, that easy peasy grant isn't as easy, so. But I would like generators if you find one.
I want to thank the engineering crew and Dusty and his crews to do this. Some of the grants have been a long time coming. And I've been through them and I'm just happy to have an overabundance, I will tell you that. And I'm going to be very interested in seeing what happens with the downtown because I think that that's going to really make a difference to our community. People are looking forward to it and they're waiting to see the trees and the walkways and these types of things. And I know that there's a criteria for planting trees, but I'd like to have just as many as you could put in. I just think that would be really nice. And I want to thank everybody once again. And I want to thank you guys for coming today and tonight. It's been very nice to be with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dusty.
I just want to add that I appreciate all the work that you do as well, even if sometimes my comments may lend to the fact that I don't appreciate. I appreciate, there's clearly a lot of hard work that has gone into this. And bringing forth, wanting information about a grant that's been mentioned or such is not a personal criticism, but rather a desire to get more information so that the community can get behind a goal that they may have. And I know that the information that I, the questions I've asked about the parks grant, we've had a conversation about that at Revide Ed. And the reality of having something on short notice, it's not a reality. But I understand that the city has limited resources. And on the Rails to Trails grant, 90% of the work is going to be done by outside sources and 10% comes back to the city.
Sounds like you did the math and.
Yeah, it's a little under 10%, yeah. But I know that 10% impacts you. So if we have other projects that we want to do, it would be my hope that we're not simply going to say, no grants. But if we're looking at a grant, that you have to have a strong community partner that is going to absorb 10% or a portion of that so that it's within what the city, what's doable for the city. So I just want you to know that I acknowledge that and I acknowledge the limitations. And my hope in other grants, as for the list of Parks Grant that I mentioned, is that you'll have members of the community that will step up, that will play a role so that there isn't more, maybe it's in the form of, for example, in the park situation, maybe it's in the form of parks and recreation.
Right.
That comes out of that, where the community says, hey, we want this, let's create. We understand that this is something that our city values, but if we don't start having that conversation, we don't even get there. So it isn't about what are you going to do to make it happen, but if this is important to me, what are we going to do to make it happen? What leader's going to step up to take this and move it forward? Or what community groups are going to pull together and make this happen? This isn't what will Dusty do to make this happen, what will we do to make this happen?
And thank you for sharing that, because my brother is, for me, it was never taken that way. Yeah. We recognize.
You work hard, the rest of the staff works hard, and I do appreciate the work that you do. But our community also needs to get involved. Whether they participate or not, they are part of the outcome and we've all got to step up. And we talked about, in other meetings, about raising taxes. And I was one of those people at first, when he said, oh, raising taxes, to be honest, Stephanie said it, I was like, ugh, I don't know that. But then I think about things like the parks and we think about other services within the community. We talk about the budget. These are uncomfortable conversations, but if we don't think about like, what do we really want as a community? Then how can I justify just saying, yes, city manager, let's raise taxes? You have to put something behind that that makes me want to say, Dusty, we need to raise our sales tax a half percent or a percent. Because you know what? We're lacking in the parks department and we have to be able to, as a city council, say, yeah, you know, maybe we're lacking in this department or that department. Let's go after that because we want to improve this for our city. But if you just tell me you want to raise taxes, I'm going to tell you no. Give me a reason to say yes so that I can find something that has value behind it. And I know that hopefully this council at a later day will talk about, you know, that sales tax increase. And this maybe, if this is something that catches on to the community and they want it, maybe we talk about that so that we can fund that other 10%. So anyway, that's my concerns.
Yeah, and I think the council, that's why in your goal setting, you identified creating the park and rectory stick to help pay for new parks and new amenities. And that's probably a good strategy to start with before we.
Just keep having the conversation.
Yeah.
Can I just add something?
I just, we've talked about the grants credit in our office and how we work together as a team to accomplish the projects that come out of the grants. And I just wanted to say that these were questions that came up for me. And I'm glad you mentioned that. When we go after grants, we have to put a lot of planning and strategy into it. And if we're going after grants, but we're not considering the long-term financial implications of building a new trail or improving our parks, then, or maintaining trees on Main Street. We are about to acquire Main Street through the relinquishment and that will add an additional cost. So I'm like right there with you with the thinking about revenue generation when we consider grants and expanding our facilities and what we offer to the community. And I think that while staff is working really hard and we're at capacity, I think it's great to think about how the community can help for improving, you know, the parks or community involvement in possibly a park district because we are really working to accomplish the goals that have been set forth by council. And if we don't focus on those goals, then, and we get sidetracked on to little things, those goals get stretched out further and further. So I just wanted to mention that because I was going to stand up and say some of the things that you shared, so I appreciate that.
I, and I'm sure the rest of the council, really appreciate that information too. Information is so critical to us being able to communicate with the community and let them know what's going on too. Sometimes, I think Brenna mentioned this in Revide Ed, you know it, so sometimes you think we know it, but we don't. So, thank you. It was a very well put together agenda packet on this topic.
Jim Robbins was going to be on there.
I was very.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Dusty, are you on again for item 10B?
Can I jump in just a little?
I want to thank Kathy for, after my item of bleeding.
I want to jump in there and just, I want to just say a few words about the success of this organization on grants. Coming from organizations that are 10 to 100 times bigger than this organization, the fact that you were able to achieve, this organization has been able to achieve what you've achieved, is absolutely stunning. I have come from organizations with budgets literally more than 10 times higher than this, and they would have been shocked to get a grant like the Rails to Trails grant. Almost, most of the grants were not done in-house. They were, we hired grant writers for $50,000 to write one grant. I was sent to Washington DC twice a year to advocate to the federal government for various grants. That was part of my duties, was to actually lobby for grants. This tiny, wonderful little organization has been so incredibly successful that I am absolutely starstruck, and I just have to tell you that. We did it on, you didn't hire outside consultants, you did it on your own. You didn't run out and, you know, go to DC to lobby. This is homegrown and we have, we have communities in Southern California who are fighting to take our Rails to Trails money because they are so shocked, the community of our size got this enormous grant. Seriously. I mean, we, so I'm so impressed and I just want to put that out there.
I think she's saying we got talent.
Yeah, talent, yeah.
When you're going to talk about $50,000 to pay a consultant to write one grant, have Jim close his ears.
Well, those were, those were very big grants and actually we had developers pay that because they were like buying an intersection off a freeway.
Don't water down what you.
But still, I mean, really, it is the quality, the high quality, and it's just everything was done right. I'm just proud of you. I'm just going to say that, I'm just so proud.
All right, Dusty.
The headset.
I am too, and I'm going to be prouder when we're done building him. So, what I was going to say is I appreciate Kathy. After I made my rant about one more grants, the next item is requesting permission to seek another grant. This is something that we've talked about before. This is something that we've had on our radar and been planning to take on. What we have in front of you is we're seeking authorization to make application, receipt of a Senate bill to planning grant program funds to initiate an application to amend the City of Willet sphere of influence, as well as to amend our budget should the state approve our application. This is a unique opportunity for the city to receive $160,000 from the California Department of Housing and Community Development to support local planning efforts to facilitate housing production. This is a non-competitive grant series. Provided we make application and the application is deemed to be a worthy and eligible project, we shall receive the funds. There's $160,000 that's been set up for the City of Willets. I have until August 15th to get the application in. Should the council bless this application or allow staff to move forward with it, we will be working with landowners and the county and LAFCO to team up and support housing development in the Locust Street, South Adela Avenue area. Our city clerk just passed out a map to you showing the existing city limits in relationship to a potential new sphere of influence. That sphere of influence includes about 300 acres of land that's currently in the county's jurisdiction in a zone suburban residential. So all the land that's identified, it all has the same zoning and the zoning is suburban residential. Suburban residential is typically set aside for single-family residential development. In your report, it does talk to you about what the intent of that zoning district is for the county of Mendocino. That language comes out of their general plan. That zoning in the county allows for a variable density of housing production or minimum land sizes, depending on how you want to say it. Right now, those lots can be subdivided down to 40,000 square feet. You have to install an onsite septic system and a well to provide water and sewer services to your house. I understand there is a high water table out there and it makes it more difficult than usual to install a septic system. That creates a major limitation on development potential in that area. That SR zoning is a variable density, meaning should that land ever come to be within a water and sewer district, you could subdivide down to 6,000 square foot minimum lots. For comparison, that's about the size of what a standard pro-trail slot is. The idea is if you have, say, city water and sewer services, you don't need the extra land for a well and a septic system, so it becomes plausible to have a single-family home on a 6,000 square foot lot. If we're able to bring that area into the sphere of influence and the majority of landowners were interested in, their land would then be eligible to be annexed into the city limits. Upon being annexed into the city limits, that would then allow the city to extend water and sewer services to that area. At that point, you would have increased the opportunity for housing production in that area. That's why I think the idea that we set forward here, it would be an eligible project for the SB2 planning grant program funds. What would also be part of this exercise is working with the landowners and the community to prezone the land. So the city may want to consider prezoning the land. Prezoning meaning it would maintain the zoning that the county has placed on it until such time that it was annexed into the city. Then that prezoning would become the real zoning that the city identified. Question from the mayor.
Just a question. I noticed that in this diagram here, you have the. I noticed that in this diagram here, you have the Sherwood Reservation there. I thought they had water and sewer from us already. Is there an advantage?
They do, yeah, right.
And is there an advantage? I would assume they wouldn't want to be part of the city, because they're, they wouldn't be subject to our rules. I'm assuming so, so.
Yeah, so I haven't had a full conversation with the tribe as to whether they would want to be part of the city limits or not. Let's certainly all be attending tribal council meeting and posing that question, should we move forward with it. It may be that we pull them out of the sphere of influence, depending on what their tribe wants, yeah. But they do have some additional lands that I'm sure they'd be interested in potentially developing further with our water and sewer connections.
Okay.
So we've mentioned the prezoning exercise that we'd want to go through as part of this project. The other thing that we would hope to pay for with these funds would be to do the environmental review as part of that sphere of influence application. And one of the main reasons why I wanted to use these funds for that exercise is it's not enough to just simply add the land to your sphere of influence, to prezone the property, to do the environmental review. You also have to have the county enter into a tax-sharing agreement with the county. And, you know, I can, I've seen that that process can take a long time. So, you know, I was, I've always been reluctant to recommend moving this project forward for the simple fact that if we spent the money to do this and then failed to enter an agreement with the county, along with a number of other factors, we paid for this exercise and didn't recognize the housing that we're hoping to see from it, potentially. But when I'm using the state's money, it's, I feel a little bit better about it. But honestly, as far as I can tell, and I worked for the county for 10 years, this is the most real opportunity to see significant housing development in this county. You know, I worked on the housing elements for the county, and the hardship that we always found when looking for locations specifically for like low-income housing, there aren't many areas in the county that have A, flat land, and then B and C, water and sewer services available. You know, the places that did have water and sewers typically were at capacity and were able to allocate additional hookups. But anyways, again, we have to submit the application by August 15th. The other thing that I wanted to mention in closing is that in talking to the staff at the state level, they said, get your application in by August 15th with blessing from the city council. If the project is determined to be ineligible, or, you know, we put an RFP out for it and find out this isn't enough money to do, quite do what we want to do, they will allow us to then change the project, modify the project, and come back with something else that would qualify for the funding. So that could be looking internally at the zoning for the city or something else, provided we can create a nexus to housing production. And so, but again, it's all, we gotta have it in by August 15th, so.
Any questions up here?
I know I asked you a lot at Reeve I Ed, but anyone just came up. With this, with this new, with this new space, would it be strictly residential, or would the city council be able to determine? I mean, does the grant limit that it's only residential? Would we be able to do mixed use?
The grant is specifically to increase housing production. But I, it very well may be that we can put some mixed use in there as well, and it would still satisfy the requirements of the grant. And so what we can do, you know, I would have to get that clarification from the state, but it's not an automatic no.
And then my second follow-up question would be, is there currently any other zoning uses besides residential? I saw like a big building over there. Is there currently, like, could you envision that somebody would not want to be included in here because maybe they're doing, in the county, doing some kind of C1 or C2 or something otherwise?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely could. And I think that's information that'll come out from meeting with the property owners. And I'd suggest that if we move forward with that, it probably should be one of the very first steps, is meeting with them and figuring out what their concerns and desires are, you know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think this is great, and it's something that we've had on our minds for a long time, and to be able to get funding to move it forward is really exciting. And including the process of working with the county on tax-sharing and what the implications of annexing it eventually. So I'm really excited about it. I just wanted to say, the housing element, are we on schedule for that to be approved? The update, because it says that's one of the prerequisites, and are we on schedule with that?
No, we are not. And that's, that's part of the reason that the deadline for this grant moved from December to August 15th. Our housing element is set to, is good through August 15th. I've talked to the state, I've told them where we are in the process. We're not in danger of losing our eight-year cycle, but we would, after August 15th, not be eligible for submission of this grant. But again, if we get it in before August 15th, and we're prepared to do that with the council's blessing tonight, we always can change it moving forward all the way through the, essentially the end of the year. But for, and I was gonna bring this up as an update later, but where we're at with the housing element is, I'm expecting to receive the public draft tomorrow, put it on our website, make a copy available at the library, as well as the community development department. And then I've got a stakeholder meeting scheduled for, I think, August 1st, and then I'm planning to bring the draft housing element to the council at the August 14th meeting for permission to send it to HCD. And then upon their blessing, we would bring it back for adoption, as well as the environmental adoption.
So if there's a little gap there, they understand that current housing element's good through August 15th, this gets cited, there's a little, they're okay with that?
Yes, well, yeah, they're fine with it. We used to be years behind, now we'll be a couple of weeks behind. But what they've assured me is that, you know, our progress is substantial and that we're not gonna lose that eight-year cycle if we don't adopt it by August 15th. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that prior to joining the council, there was a substantial discussion in the community about rent control and potential rent control. And there are a lot of people in the community who are very concerned about the sky-high rent prices. So if you, if you believe most economists, the best way to control rent costs is to decrease your housing cost. So I think this is a very creative way to go after the potential to increase our housing, which can ultimately help our citizens who are looking for some relief on high taxes, I mean, high rents. If we have more rentals, it's better for everybody. So I think this is a great, huge use of it.
Larry, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just think it's a, it's a good thing, and I looked it over, and I've been out there several times and looked it over, and it's the direction to go, and I'm with the rest of you. I just think that it's, it's a good thing, and I would like to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Brenna, second. Any further discussion?
I was hoping to ask a question.
Sure. Go on, my next thing, anybody from the public?
Forgive my ignorance, but I heard some time ago-
Could you state your name for a job?
Joe Carlat.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. I just had a question, which may or may not be relevant, that the county was considering putting low, high-density housing into that area of Willet's that you were talking about. And it, I understand that Willet's is considering like annexing that piece of land. Now, does that impact the county's current plans for having affordable housing area? Or is it actually even an issue? Is there a conflict between the county's ownership of land and the city annexing this other property?
Ms. Colton, I think, and Dusty can probably correct me, but the county or the city isn't gonna build the housing, and so basically what the county's doing is zoning it so there could be, which is, in essence, when we go through our process, we would sit there and we want to have as much housing as we can in our area. So I would assume, Dusty, the answer would be no?
Well, there are a couple of things there. So you're correct in that it's not our role to actually physically develop it, but rather to create the opportunities. My guess is that the city, or that the county may not be looking at that area to support low-income housing. The reason being is that, you know, the state's definition of a low-income housing opportunity is something like 14.5 units per acre. And you, when you're going through that exercise of identifying areas within the county to support low-income housing, you can't do it with well and sewer. You have to find areas in the county that are supported and have availability of water and sewer services. So the county, I don't think legally could identify low-income housing in that area of the county, because it doesn't have water and sewer services available. However, if we were to annex it into the city, we could extend water sewer services there. And, you know, one of the things I'm anxious to talk to the county about, because I know their difficulty in meeting their RENA numbers for their housing elements, specifically low-income and high-density, is if we annex it, we could probably create opportunities for you to meet your RENA numbers and stay in compliance with your housing element and all the benefits, but you need to team up with us. And so that, again, I think will be part of the discussion when we meet with the county.
And that was a question I had.
This isn't gonna interfere with that, no.
And Ms. Colton, just so you know, we have a lot of people in this Willet's area that get city water, because PG&E used to own the system, and so they kind of got grandfathered in. But if you're on Adela and want city water and don't have it already, we can't give it to you. And so this is one way for those folks to get city water and sewer. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Go.
Yeah, this is, I want to point out, there's a little typo in here on the recommendation number three, in the middle section, recommended action. Is amended the fiscal year 2019-20 budget by increase both budget revenue and the budget expenditure in the amount of $160,000 in the general fund? General fund is incorrect. It should be capital outlay fund. This fund cannot be commingable with general fund.
Okay.
That just needs to be corrected, capital outlay funds. Will be same as the, if you look at fiscal impact on the bottom, if this is Fund 400, it's a capital outlay fund, so that's not general.
What fund is that?
Capital outlay fund.
Oh, capital outlay fund, okay.
So that's just for us projects-wise, so it can be commingable with general fund.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for getting that, Jim.
Unless we have anybody else, I guess I'll bring it back up here, and any other questions? If not, we have a motion in a second. All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Americans Olmos?
Yep. All right. Thank you. Item C, Discussion to Adopt Resolution Awarding Contract to Bootleggers' Construction Not to Exceed Amount of $290,690. And for the construction of North Maple Street Improvement and Storm Drain Replacement Project.
Hello. Okay. Good evening. Suzanne Litzis, Assistant Engineer for the City. So, when I last saw you all together, I believe it was in June, and I asked permission to put this project back out to bid, and we went ahead and did that, and we got actually a different low bidder this time. We got bootlegger construction. They came in at just over $290. So for those of you who are interested, that $290 is less than what it would have been if Granite had gone with the original, if we'd kind of gone with the original bid. And it also cleans up any potential issues with other contractors who bid on the project if we were to have negotiated the overages on the asphalt. So we think that this is a cleaner way to go altogether, and the city, again, will come out with a lower cost than original. So I'd just like to know if you have any other questions about that.
No, I guess, take a motion.
Maybe we should put more bids up for a second.
Do you want to point out, for this CIP projects, since we did budget differently than previous
years, so every single CIP project have their own page. If you have, you, I'm pretty sure you guys already have your revised budget book. This, this project actually is gonna be on page 150, so you will see the $345,000 is, it was authorized in 1819. And then, so, by, by authorize, this contract will reduce that amount, so just in case in the future, there's a change orders or something else that goes through council, you have a list of things, this is 345 on this page, now this is 290, subtract that, this is something else, subtract that. So you will see the whole project cost eventually come down to, you know, how much money we left, or maybe we need more, sort of project-wise. So this project's on page 150, page 150 of the book. However, in this one, if you look on page 150, the engineer gave me the estimate for prior year, since, which is 1819, for $75,000. I stated there, but that's estimate amounts, since we haven't go through audit yet. So, so far, I just checked the system, so far I only spent $6,000, so we do have sufficient funds for cover this contract. I just want to make that clear, because everything should lie with the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion? Can I have a second?
I second.
I second.
Any further discussion? Anybody from the public?
North Maple Street, that's across from me, right? Just for clarification, it's been a long day. Okay.
Yeah, it is.
All right, so, call for the vote.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Epstein.
Stransky?
Yes.
Stransky?
I, can I vote? If I can vote on it, yes.
Yeah, this is, this project is essentially an improvement of underground drainage systems, is that right? So as, I did a memo about a month ago saying that just because you're within 500 feet of that type of a project, you are not conflicted and you can vote.
Then yes.
Yes.
Public perception, I'm just gonna stay, let the votes be decided.
Sure.
All right. All right, now we are on. Item D, Discussion Adoption Awarding Contract to Argonaut Construction in an Amount Not to Exceed $933,801 for the construction of Pine Street and Vicinity Utility Park. To your back.
Yeah. Andrea Trincottus Slater, project manager. I'm here to recommend the adoption of a resolution awarding a contract to Argonaut Constructors in the amount not to exceed $933,801 for the construction of Pine Street and Vicinity Utility Projects, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contracts and approve construction change orders up to cumulative total of 10% of the total contract amount. I would like to note that we got good prices from Argonaut on this. It came in under the engineer's estimate, so we were really happy with the results. There is a typo under the fiscal impact. A couple of the splits for, I believe it was for water and sewer, were pre-contingency amounts. So I prepared another resolution, a corrected resolution, and Kathy has a copy of that. So the correct amount with contingency is $1,027,181, and that split between Transportation Fund, and I don't know if I need to report each number, if you guys all have them, but it's $461,808. The Water System Maintenance Fund is $372,575.97, and then the Sewer Maintenance Fund is And then the sewer maintenance fund is $192,797.
And June, do we have the money?
However, the problem with that is on the page 153 on your budget book, this project number actually is budgeted in TW10. On the split between water funds, sewer funds, and the half percent sales tax fund, okay, yeah, so that's the split you're looking into, and that will reduce each amount in there. Okay, I think it's fine. It's $461,425, I was a little concerned because we authorized the 414 for 1920, but we also carried over 215 for last year, I forgot about that. So, yeah, so this is fine, yes.
So we got money.
Yeah. We budgeted 1.2 million, 1.5 million, so for this project.
And?
So, yeah, we're, I was a little, yeah, sorry.
Number three.
Yeah, I have to look at numbers to make sure. And then because after this, we're going to do the encumbrance in the accounting system, so this fund will not be available for future projects or future authorization anymore. That's why split for me is kind of very important. That's what it is.
And we double-checked our budgeted numbers, and everything came in under, water was the closest I think we have with contingency. We don't know if we'll need the contingency, but we had 5,000 left over with our budget. So it's not likely that we would spend the full contingency.
And this is all new payment on top of what we do, right? So it'll look nice when we're done?
I just wanted to say, this is a big project. So for anybody in the community who is concerned by that big number, it's going to be a huge quality of life difference for the people on Pine, Maple, and Spruce, and really will improve long-time problems underground as well as improving the street service. So I think once this project is done, hopefully people will be very happy with the results, and that price tag won't look quite so scary. Yes, exactly.
Andrea, is this where we lost that school bus once?
It just fell in.
Well, it was a rear tire, I heard, went around on Spruce and Mendocino, or is that, that's not going to be?
I'm not sure.
We had one that came around and it was a collapsed dorm drain kind of thing.
The road conditions in that neighborhood, especially on Maple, are really bad, and we're looking forward to fixing them. And Jeremy and I have been working together on this project. And we'll probably be out there inspecting, you know, for the next couple of months as well.
Me and my dog will come by and say hi then. All right.
There's a lot of walkers.
So anybody from the public hearing that about up here? Do I have any?
I just want to say that, June, I feel very reassured that you're present at the meeting and that you're paying attention to the numbers. We haven't had that in prior years where somebody's really watching it. And I always worry about the budget because we'll see, we'll see what we budgeted, and then the numbers are always changing. And I find it very reassuring that you're here, you're paying attention, and I appreciate that you stepped up even though you had to make sure in your mind that it was correct. That tells me you're paying attention, and that's very valuable.
Likewise.
I just wanted to know, it's appreciated that you speak up.
And we're doing some things new that we hadn't done before, like encumbering funds, which is like a normal thing in other places, had never been done here. And June's like, well, these funds have to be encumbered, and now we're doing them, and I'm so excited. Because this is the way it's supposed to be. So, yeah.
I think, Councilmember Marius, one time we were talking, this is some project was last like a few years small, and then maybe it's maybe four or five years small. And then so especially ATP project, it's going to last like, who knows how long it will be. So with this whole budget set up, this page, so we can, we know what's the progress of each project, how much money we're really spending on, so how much money we have to chip in if we have to. So we have overview, because those project number one is signed, it will not re-sign to a different project number anymore. So you always can see the history and what's going on, where the stage is. In reality, by October, we're going to do the three-month review like was you guys requested. And then those single pages are going to be updated. There's a comment area, so I'm writing notes on each council meeting, if you authorize any contract, anything. So it's all going to be noted on the bottom of the comments area, so, and then also give update on how much we have to spend on at that point in time. So that way every council know what the CIP project is going to be. That's my intent.
Thank you on that.
With engineering, we're happy it came in under budget.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, Kathy?
Yes. Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Megan Zollis?
Sure. All right. And item E, Resolution to Pay Back Federal Statewide Transportation Improvement Program. I think we kind of talked a little bit about this earlier, but we never said.
Suzanne Lutzis, Assistant Engineer again. Yeah, I just wanted to talk to you about this and hopefully get your approval to pay back the funds that are owed from a long time ago. If you look at the report, we were granted the funds in 1991 to replace a temporary bridge. I believe it was put up in early 80s. It's the East Valley Bridge, so you probably are all familiar with that bridge. It's well-used, and it definitely deserves to be replaced. We do owe money, though. We owe about just shy of, I think, $46,000. It was such a long time ago that it's really hard to pin down exactly what happened. It's very sad when you look at the record, and it's just a box of just thousands of dollars of work that's just covered in dust. And there's just this old bridge there that it's just still there. So I am excited to pay back the money because it means that we can hopefully move forward. And I've prepared an application to get funding for a new bridge. And I'm hoping that I can submit it, but we do need to pay back the funds in order to have an accepted application again. And I am concerned that it'll take a lot of time and effort. And so I was very happy to hear your support when Dusty was speaking about the grants. I was hoping that was the response that I would hear, and I didn't have to burst up here and try and convince you otherwise. So it is a big project. The bridge is estimated to cost over $5 million. So we'll still be on the hook for about $500,000 if everything goes well.
I just have one question, Suzanne. The money we're paying back, I know we received some money from them. Is this the money we're paying back, money that?
Yeah.
Their money and?
That's on page 146, the bottom. So, yeah, it's, we ought to spend that $46,000 received, exactly the change, might not be 46 even, but we ought to spend like $45,000 or some change. So that was spent a long time ago. Now they want to pay back that was on the budget for this project. The next fiscal year, we're going to do an application. So it might not be programmed, because normally, even after they prove the grants, the program in a few months after that. So we were looking on this, on this page, we're looking, we're probably going to do the project in 2021 fiscal year. So that's when it start happen, about like $500,000.
And the money we're spending, or the money that we've already spent that we're now we're paying back, we have that money in the budget to pay back?
Yes, yes, that's on the 146, the common about 202% sales tax.
She's even given us little post-its, item 10E on the general.
Yeah, I did, I did that before the council meetings. Each item is coming to which page.
Okay, cool. All right.
Are there any other questions?
No. I so move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Second, okay. I'll take the head nod as a second then. All right, any further discussion? If not, Kathy?
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Megan Zollis?
Yep.
And hopefully that will be the last time we have to give money back.
Yeah, I know. There you go. All right, now we're on item F, Resolution to Award a New Contract to Lakos Associates Not to Exceed Amount of $70,000 in Amendment Lakos Previous General Engineering Services Contract Fiscal Year 2018-19 in the Amount Not to Exceed $21,000 to Provide General Engineering Services to the City of Willets. Are you taking the lead on that?
Okay, I'm back. Yeah, so we need a licensed engineer to act as our city engineer currently. And Lakos had that job, I think since when? 2017?
2016.
16, 16. Gosh, okay, I miss mine. And so we would like to contract with Lakos again for the, well, this fiscal year now. We also went over the last contract in the last fiscal year by about $21,000. Little, actually, just barely over 20, but I rounded up. Because of a couple reasons, we were really productive, first of all, so we needed that extra time with mostly rod. And then we also did have some special projects. The fund numbers show up here. There's actually a typo in one of them. It should be for the amendment, the $4,000, it should be 503, 5031, 4003, 002, not 3. And that's for the Davis Creek Waterline move that happened this year that kind of came as a surprise out of nowhere. So Lakos did help us with some of that work.
And I believe that was because we weren't planning on it, the county decided to move the bridge, and we had to respond.
Yeah, so we didn't really see that coming, so that accounted for some of the overage there. So we do need to actually go back. It's definitely not the ideal situation to go back, and not really planning on doing it like that in the future.
Suzanne, you said there was some changes. Is the resolution accurate that we have?
The resolution that you have is not, but the resolution that I just handed Kathy is. So that lacks.
You should change the fund number.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
This is just a minor question, but in the previous report, when you gave us the fund numbers, you gave us the names of the funds that would be impacted, and this one is just strings of numbers. Do those not have proper names or?
No, they do, and I wish I would have put it in there to tell you the truth.
That would be helpful, I think.
I think so. The first one is the, so I'm glad I could be here to explain it. But the $11,000 is basically just the general services contract, so it's mostly, we could say it's probably consultation with rod. The second number is water, and we actually had Lakos design a building for a pump station that we're working on, and they did the actual like building part of it for us. And then the third part is the Davis Creek Waterline replace, move, movement. So, yeah, I agree with you.
Well, I have the same comment, so I'm glad that we will have those in there. And then I'm just a little confused where it says sufficient funds were budgeted and used in FY 1819, but you're asking for an amendment to add some money to 1819? No, we're asking for, so the amendment is to amend the contract. When we spend money in a city, we do two things. We budget it, and then we have authority to contract for it. So we had enough money for the budget, and we used the money in the budget, and that was perfectly appropriate. However, contractual authority needed to, we needed a contract amendment. So this is just a contract authority, and that's where the amendment comes in. Okay, good.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And also, to come back to what Stephanie was saying before, we were not doing encumbrance for any of the contracts. And this time, this fiscal year, we're doing that, just because of this manner, so we would know, well, once we did the encumbrance, and then we would know where we at, if we're going to over or not, because it would raise the red flag, says, hey, you above you.
We will not be able to spend money because it will be encumbered, and we will have, it will be a big red flag in our finance system now.
Yeah. This one actually is a budget, the page 243, in the strike or other contract lines, the budget would budget $75,000, which is $70,000 for specific just for this contract, and the $5,000 for the general contract. So we did budget this $70,000 for 1920. That's on the 243.
So two questions, or actually one statement, as Madge and Greta brought up, I think if four years from now, somebody's looking through boxes and wondering what we did, that's important because I'm assuming that fund numbers change. And so that would, to me, the historical parts, not just for us to know, but when you go look at it, finance has a question, or whoever has a question, so.
It's helpful.
Yeah, so you get that, I just figured that that's just another reason. And another question, I know that Rod is the engineer of record, is that how that works? And are you guys close to being there?
Me.
All right. And?
Very close.
Okay, just curious, I mean, I want to encourage that.
There's three exams, I passed two, and I'm studying for the third one, so.
I mean, Rod's a good guy, and I appreciate his guidance over the years.
12 years later or something, I'm hoping to get it soon.
Wish you well.
Thank you.
So you'll probably be talking to us a lot more before you get there, but you'll have it all down by the time it gets, so. All right, do I?
One quick question, that was what I was going to ask, do we have anybody that's close, and do we have a plan? And then also, what about other cities our size? So like, just say Fort Brigha or Lakeport, do they have a licensed city engineer? Is it, are we in an uncommon situation, or is it pretty common?
No. So there are engineers with licenses, and then there's the city engineer. That's not necessarily the same thing. So to be sort of the city engineer is kind of a big deal, it's a department-type position. Just because you have a license doesn't make you the city engineer. And so that's, that takes a lot of experience. You want somebody that's very seasoned, and rods that person. And so when we did an RFP, RFQ for that position, it was looking at firms where engineers had significant amounts of public experience as a licensed engineer. So it is likely we will have a license, we will be contracting out for city engineer for some time.
So we have somebody that can sign off on things as opposed to having?
Well, if we, we have to, by law, we have to designate a city engineer. So even if we have people with licenses here, they're still going to be acting underneath the city engineer, because it's typical to have sort of a staff of engineers and then a city engineer, and that has to pass by the city engineer. For a city this size, yeah, absolutely, you get, you contract out, unless, you know, we've had budgeted, not budgeted, we have sort of on our org chart a public works director. We haven't been able to afford that in some time. In many cases, the public works director is also the city engineer. That's pretty common. If we were to have a public works director, that position, if we were ever going to be able to afford it, would be a licensed engineer, and they would oversee utilities and public works and engineering. And they would probably, they would be over all three departments, and it would be a department-type position. But maybe someday in the future when we have more money.
So I got some feedback from just one member of the community, and I was trying to understand this, and they were saying that some of our projects don't happen as quick as maybe they would like because we have to keep going to rod to get sign off. If somebody with, and I'm not stating that that's true, this was just the feedback, if somebody within the city was to move up and get their license, would that expedite any level of being able to make more localized decisions without that extra layer? Or would it be pretty much the same?
I think it'd be the same. I mean, Rod is here a couple times a week. I mean, he's here all the time. So I don't see that as.
And like I said, it was a single concern, and I was trying to understand.
That is a holdup. Rod is, anytime you need Rod, you call him, he's there. We have public works meetings, he's always there. He's just, he is very responsive.
Just maybe not as fast as they would like, but still varies quickly.
It's a long time to design, plan and design projects, and that's just the reality. It's just, there's a million details.
And Suzanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, I don't really need you to come up right away for that. There's a lot of liability that goes in with doing engineering, right? So you can't just sign off like me signing off on an alcohol. So, you can't just sign off like me signing off on an alcohol permit. You gotta actually look at the project.
Also, if we did them any faster, we would run out of money. I mean, we're doing them, and about pace that we're bringing in money to do the projects.
Yes.
This year, we're pretty busy. We're taking a chunk out of all the funds that we're dealing with.
What's Tom Manett, a licensed engineer? Okay. So, we had one at one time and didn't get along with its city manager, so she let him go.
Well, before Tom, we had a, I think, Greg Siner, then he ended up.
Yeah, well, that, she's in UK.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just trying to understand a little bit more about engineering.
Before Tom came, we contracted it out. So, that's great, Tom.
Okay.
Do we have a motion now?
Not yet.
Can I make a motion?
I want to think. I think in addition to projects just taking a really long time, because Suzanne said there's many details, we were a plug and stop shop. We go from surveying, design, you know, plans and specifications, bidding, contract management, we do, we do the whole thing. And, and in order to accomplish a project, it takes a long time of, like, take its time. And, you know, just the nature of things on staff in city our size, we constantly hold off on things that come up, like things we need to tend to. So, I think that that is actually more of an obstacle than anything else, from my perspective. And I think my colleagues share that perspective.
That's good to know, so that when we get that feedback, we can have some feedback to get that through as well.
So, we should take away your windows and your phone lines?
There's a lot of things that come up that really, like, probably, no one's even aware of. You know, like, we have a landfill up there that takes time. We have just, I mean, I could go on and on and on, you know?
It's amazing.
Yeah.
And actually, it is really, actually unusual for a, their team to be able to do so many tasks. In many cities, a lot of the design work and other things are bid out, which increases the timeline, because you have to do a bid for the, for the design work. Basically, everything, every step on a project, you would have to bid out. Because they do so much in-house, it actually streamlines most projects. So, we're incredibly lucky to have a team that actually knows all those facets of a project. Because I'm used to, okay, you bid out the design. Okay, let's bid out this. Okay, let's bid out this. And it, a project will take a year and a half to even start construction. And we don't have that here. And it's really, it's really pretty cool to see that. So much in-sout, so much in-house design here is, it's nice.
Yeah. We're also really cheap. We're very.
Yeah, very much so.
What if I find a different way to say that?
It's very economical for to have.
I also think Rod, Rod is sort of a part of our team in some ways. He's a, he's a contract city engineer, but we worked with him for a long time. And, and there's, you know, we're able to expedite a lot of our stuff, because we worked together for a long time. So, he helps facilitate, I think, expediting the project, as opposed to somebody that maybe we haven't worked with that much, that wants to do a lot more.
So, at this point, I'll call for a motion, but we did have some changes, right?
I have a change.
I saw move.
I have, I have first and Larry second.
Oh, who's, who made the motion?
No.
I tried.
We accept yours.
I guess I succeeded.
She caught, you caught her up. So, any further discussion, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, John.
Yes.
Jen, Eric Gonzalez?
Yes. And guys, I like it when I see you guys out on, out there with the contractors. It reassures me that, you know, it's somebody local is watching what they're doing.
And I do remember when I first came on council, and maybe before that, when I was observing council, that we did a lot of contracting out of the engineering designs. And it was expensive, and not as expeditious either. You know, it took a lot longer, so it's great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. So, that brings us to City Council Committee, Board, City Agency reports. Do we have anything?
Yes. I knew we sit on the museum advisory board. We had a meeting, I can't even remember now when it was, maybe two weeks ago. We did not have a forum. It was an interesting meeting anyway. Apparently, they have not had a forum since maybe January. So, I have been pestering Supervisor Hasek to ask the Board of Supervisors to look at the two districts who have had non-present appointees. So, we're hoping to be able to get to a forum next month, so we can actually make some decisions.
Anybody else?
Supremo will talk about by that. Do you want to do that? You were it.
I'm not sure what we have to report. I mean, we talked about grant writing.
Revide Ed, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, revide Ed. I think the only thing that really, that Dusty hadn't covered, and that Stephanie had mentioned, and you had, you left just a few minutes before we had wrapped up, is that, or maybe you want to take it from here, about the pavers.
Pavers?
Yes.
I'm anxious to start on the paver project, and we don't have any time. I mean, we have to wait till relinquishment. We're looking at spring. But now is the time to be looking at design. And I, my hope is that we have the revide Ed or some interested people. This is a great way for the community to get involved in picking sort of the design. And that's the fun stuff, because, so if we have people helping pick the design, help us track down the manufacturer, how much it is, whether it's feasible. I would love that to be the project.
I know some people who helped on the tree subcommittee.
Yes.
Who also have aesthetic ideas, and they, I think, would be, will be involved in that. So, I can send out some, you know.
Yeah. And it's not just design, but who makes it, what's it made out of, how much it is. All that can be really time consuming for staff, but that's, that's very, very applicable for a community never to help with.
I think that more than that, is we, I think that we need to plant the trees at the right time, too. And that's in the early winter or fall, I mean, or spring. And the sooner you get those in, and then, you can work the pavers around them. But the trees are the most important thing.
I think, think what, what was, kind of came about is when revide Ed, when we were talking about signs, like, I ended up being on the committee to kind of get the signs thing. I think the hope was is that since you're downtown, and you've already connected with maybe some of the people with pavers, would you be willing to get together a group of people that would help make this?
Yes.
Early decision about paving and take the lead?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that what, that's what you were looking for, right? Yeah.
Cool.
I'll just mention that neither EDFC or MSWAT met since our last meeting, but they will be meeting, like, I guess, at the next time I'll report when they meet.
All right. Larry, did you have anything other than?
Jerry and I went to the mental health Measure B meeting today. And they finally read a point of five million dollars there, or a part of their money is coming in. And the most interesting thing to me was they made a purchase of a behavior health center and a sheriff's substation. And that was in?
I think it's Redwood Valley.
Redwood Valley. And they didn't do it at a regular meeting, but they got together and contacted the people that could come to this meeting, and they did it in a special meeting. And that raised a little bit of an eyebrow with some of the people that thought maybe that it was not done correctly, but they kind of glossed over it. And so, now, we're the, if it, if the owner takes it, they have a new, new facility, not the facility for that, that group, but that they, the substation is going to be incorporated into that.
Yeah, so I'm assuming there's also, they didn't get into it at this meeting, but they'll go to the Board of Suks, but there'll be probably county money mixed in with Measure B money for this. And there will be a trading center there, and that's where they're, I'm not sure, it seemed to be some of the folks spoke about it, some, there were some folks that were a little concerned, as Larry said, that they did it in a special meeting. And the county clerk spoke to it and said that it was done legally. They posted everything legally, but the gentleman from the coast raised, just that it didn't look good.
Was the "they" the Board of Suks?
No, it was the Measure B. Went together, they toured the facility, and then, now, they, they made a recommendation and out of that meeting, and then, I believe the transaction's happening with the Board of Suks. They also, I guess they put out, they've got somebody in mind that made an offer, and they didn't announce it, to be their project director. And they were putting out an RFQ, so this isn't dead yet, Howard isn't dead yet, for a combination behavioral health facility slash PUF psychiatric health facility. And the idea is to see a feasibility study to see whether or not Howard, redoing Howard is the way to go, or whether to purchase, there's some property on Orchard Street that they think they own, but build one from the ground up there and see which one is going to work better. And that's what the study will, will try and determine. So, the Howard isn't dead yet, it's part of this, so that's what they're looking at. And they were talking about sixty to ninety days after the RFQ goes out before they would hear something. And then, they also said specifics. I think Mr. Diamond kind of pulled me and said, we haven't seen a project yet, so I can't tell you. I said, I have concerns overall, but for impacts of the city, but we haven't seen a project in which to comment on. They can't technically get a project until they decide they want to go that way or not. So, it's kind of hard. And there was a lot of discussion regarding that, so. And anything else, Larry?
Yep.
Yeah. And then, I'm on Lapco, they didn't meet last month, and Liga Cities has a meeting in Point Arena on August ninth that I'll attend, so.
And MTA, I failed to mention. MTA meets next week on Wednesday the thirty-first at three thirty. If any, from, anybody from the community would like to come and talk about any unmet needs for transit here in the council chambers.
Okay. All right. Yeah, any, any recommendations?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, I think, constituent was asking that apparently in Brook Trails, the Sherwood Firewise folks have volunteers who will help people who have fire unsafe conditions but aren't able, like they're elderly and they can't afford to hire somebody to clear their brush. Is there anything like that here in the city? Is there any volunteer group or any, any resource to help people that can't afford to get their brush cleared?
I think it's called Tom Woodhouse.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was a question. I'll refer them to Tom Woodhouse. I got a couple of different correspondences with a solar outfit that would be quite happy to, if we give them authorization to record, our PG&E records, they would do all the work to kind of come up with a proposal and show us how much it would cost if we paid for it, or if we had a PPA or whatever. They would do basically all the work for nothing. And I'm just wondering if it is okay to, to send that information to our staff? And basically, what he says, all we need to do is fill out this form, which didn't come out in the measure outfit, that authorizes them to have access to our PG&E records. Seems to me it would be a useful thing towards a future energy planning that we're doing.
And this is to create a new solar array for a new capital project?
It would be looking at, it would be looking at the feasibility, and, but in order to come up with numbers, they need to, to see our PG&E records. And the outfit is called True Source Energy. They do work with, with John Takas, who is a local solar guy. They have some experience, extensive experience in this. So, I, I can send you all the information. I just wanted to see if it was okay.
You know, council, when we received direction regarding what we were going to be doing, we were given certain guides to do certain things, and capital projects was not one of them. If it's, so we have not been going to that angle, because we are dealing with our other capital project. And we actually probably need to meet in closed session again about that to report on, on how that one is going. So, I'm not sure we're in a position to look at that right now, but if, unless council serves us. And Larry?
Could I just add that what they were saying is that they would take that data, and they would probably take a few months, or at least a month or two, to come up with some preliminary things?
I think, I think what Stephanie's saying is that because we have some other closed session information that would impact this, that that's good information, but can we hold on to that and sit on it for just a little bit until we resolve the other? I, I, I hear where you're coming from, but it sounds like closed session needs to be addressed before we do.
And I think that's going to happen soon. I think for next month.
Okay. Well, I'm very eager to see some, you know, looking forward to reducing our energy bills and also our energy, our impact on carbon. So, the sooner we get to it, the better, as far as I'm concerned, but I understand.
That, Larry was holding fingers regarding this?
Yes. I just think that, that a lot of these solar things for free, there's never a no-free lunch. There's always a catch or something down the line. And I don't know where this is, but in my life of forty years, that there's no free lunch. They're going to get you some.
I didn't want to be the only cynic, but.
And I just wanted to say, I feel like I brought up something similar a few weeks or, I don't know, a month ago. And it sounds like because engineering is so, has so much on their plates for the summer, that was something that would be looked at in the fall as far as working on that energy plan. So, we just have to, I mean, I understand your eagerness. We just have to let them do what they do, so that when that clears off, then they have more time to address. I mean, they can't do everything at once.
Yeah. We've talked about Tina Tyler.
Tina, oh, thank you for the name. I've got, I could picture her, but not her name.
And you heard about how, how they're advocating with the bike helmets. She's with Mendocino Public Health, but she wants to remind us, she's both with Mendocino Public Health and Walk and Bike Mendocino. And we were talking about how there's been some complaints about how the bike lanes are being used in town, and so on and so forth. And I was telling her, wouldn't it be nice if we could partner with our Ten Thousand Steps, but we just recently had one. We came up with a different idea for the first one, and we're looking for the council's blessing as, we're not asking for the city necessarily to do anything, but for the council to kind of bless the, the idea. And that would be that on Thursday, August twenty-nine, from, I think we have identified five thirty to seven, we would be meeting on Commercial Street. And we would be meeting a group of adults and young people, and we would head on Commercial Street and down Main Street. But before we took the bike ride, they would all be, everybody would be wearing a helmet. We would be making sure that they have it properly fitted on their head. And going over, how do you actually ride in the bike lane? Should we ride on the sidewalk? Which direction do you go with the flow of traffic? So, a little bit of education piece that Walk and Bike Mendocino would be offering. And then, we would all go on this bike ride. Right now, we're not asking for the city to do anything, but it is possible that we might come back to you and say, hey, we need some sign that the city already has, nothing new, to kind of let traffic know that bikes will be riding on this particular day. And so, we're looking for some blessing from the council that you think this is a great idea, and you know why we'll be out there, right?
You don't have a date yet?
Yeah, August twenty-ninth. That's a Thursday evening.
Yeah, they had. What time?
Five thirty to seven.
I know that they approached me a long time ago regarding a bicycle safety thing, and I said, please, we love that, please.
They did it in Ukiah, and they, and they were going to do a bicycle and pedestrian safety thing. safety thing at the senior center. And I think they even did it in our school.
Yeah, they came out and did stuff in the schools.
Like an adult outreach. Yeah.
Yeah. They did bike rodeos and they did stuff.
This would be specifically because we've heard so much feedback about Main Street. So we're not going on the back roads. We're going on Main Street, so we all know how to use Main Street. So is, is council good with that?
As long as Remif is good with it, I'm good.
And, yeah.
Safety classes, heck yeah.
That's my birthday, so to me, it sounds like you're throwing a parade for me, and I'm all down.
People will get dusty on a bike.
Yes, I had one other thing.
Are you, are you done, Sabrina?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I just, in the process of going through a lot of, looking at the budget closely and trying to find typos and all that stuff, I, I got a chart from June that I thought was really useful. It's the numbers that go with the thing on page 12. And so I just made copies of that. And then attached to it is comments that I made, some of which are moot, many of which are moot, because they've either been incorporated or they aren't. But I am going to be looking to see a couple of things that I, that kind of reflects to me about numbers that didn't seem consistent from one page to another. And I've, I've been hearing that I'm probably just misunderstanding. I, I do want to make sure that I'm satisfied that all the i's got dotted and the t's got crossed. And I think that, that chart was very useful to me. And just summarizing the general fund, the pie chart was really hard to read. So I asked for that chart. So anyway, just thought I would let you in on that email conversation that I've been having.
Okay.
I just, I'm hoping that I have a quick little needy recommendation. So I don't know how many of us took up Chief Wilks and his offer to drive around and look at areas regarding fire concerns versus blight. His department sends out letters to properties that are, you know, potentially dangerous. And we had an interesting conversation about, you know, what is blight and what is actual fire hazard. And that brings into question our newly hired building inspector who also has a function as a code enforcement officer. And I was talking with Stephanie this morning about what percentage of his job is code enforcement versus building inspection. And I think it would be helpful if we, as a council, had a discussion about how, how much we want him to be spending time on code enforcement. One of the things that we, most of us here, from community members, is my neighbor's brass is too tall, or the bushes, you know, I can't see around the corner. So I just felt like, for me, as a new, maybe you've all thought about this, but it would be helpful to me to have some understanding of how much we can pile on this new person as far as code enforcement goes. What is our priority as a council? What is the community's priority? And how do we, how do we balance? So I, I would be open to having a discussion where we could, you know, kind of look this out.
Sounds good to me.
Dusty, do you want to comment on when we might be able to do that?
Dusty, you're the community director. Speaking to Davey today, we are going to keep track of his time spent on code enforcement versus building inspector work. So we will have real numbers for you to, to tell you. And I'm sure it'll barely depending. Right now, our understanding is that our priority is certainly is the building inspections. Having said that, there's a variety of code enforcement infractions. They can vary from I don't like my neighbor's landscaping to, you know, somebody's dumping oil in the creek. If it's a health and safety issue, that becomes a top priority even more than probably might even cancel an inspection. The, I don't like the look of my neighbor's house, we might, that, that would take a lower priority. Not that we don't respond. What we do is we ask everyone to put it in writing and make a complaint. And we respond as quickly as we can. So that's, that's kind of the gist of how we play it right now.
But I'm hoping that, so Davey hopefully will come soon to introduce himself to our council. And we can maybe have a detailed discussion about that.
And I think just even hearing, I mean, you were sort of jokingly giving those as examples. But I think that hearing that kind of example of what real code enforcements actually are out there that become priorities can help the community maybe rethink some of the complaints they might make of, oh, is this really a priority? Is this the most important thing for city staff to be looking at? I think that information could help the public as well.
Right, yes. No, thank you. And then Davey, Mr. Wilk will be here at the August 14th meeting. And I've asked him to attend subsequent meetings as well, in case you have questions about the building.
So would it be sufficient to have him come and answer those questions? Or would you like a staff report?
I think it sounds like you're working on putting together actual hours. And I don't, I don't mean to burden anyone with a report at this time, but if that's just something that we're thinking about and, you know.
Yeah. And, yeah. And Davey's just starting out. So I mean, she's just getting a feel for the job. So it might be a little bit quick to start asking him questions about what his thoughts are on code enforcement, what the parties of the department. And most likely, he's just going to look at me. And I'm going to look at you, and you're going to look at them. So.
That's how it works.
Yeah.
Well, maybe I can chime in. John Sherman, I think, took a lot of rough over the years. And we had some council members who were less than keen on any code enforcement and some that wanted a lot of it. There was that, I think, balance he tried to strike there. And, and kind of, I think he covered a lot of what you just said about neighbor's fence and neighbor's house color versus outside marijuana growing that was excessive, as opposed to not complying with the law and those sort of things. And so I think a discussion, you know, a brief, our brief might give direction to the public and new council members as to what they can or can't do. I think what the fire chief and I, we haven't connected up yet. I emailed him regarding, to get an idea of what, so if I'm hit up by the public, I can say that isn't as serious as you might think it is, or that will be in October, but not now, kind of thing. But we also have kind of a weird thing with, the fire department can go out and give a professional opinion, but we are responsible, I believe, for our own abatement here. They send out letters, but ultimately, and a lot of people respond and cut their grass or do whatever. But it's up to us to, to do it. Whereas in Brook Trails, the, the fire department actually does the abatement up there and does that. So I think having everybody on the same page is important, too.
Yeah. And maybe just to speak to that for a second, I know it's getting late, but what the fire chief and I, I've been taking on code enforcement duties, actually, the entire staff has, Mr. Wilk's gone and that's been filled. They, they're concerned with overgrown vegetation as a fire hazard. Our code also points to it as being a potential blight. And so what we decided to do, rather than contacting the owner separately, is we worked together to write one letter to reference the fire danger part of it as well as the potential nuisance blight. And then we both signed the letter. We had to send, unfortunately, about forty or fifty letters out. And Chris has actually been the one that's been going around to verify what, what problem properties we have and then follow up and make sure that the violation's been taken care of. And I think either 100% or 95% of the violations got taken care of. And we didn't have to write a second letter or issue like fines to property owners and things like that. While I've got the TV camera on me, we do have some folks that generally aren't able to either afford to pay for someone or do the work themselves. And so if there is volunteers, I always look at this. And anyways, there's folks out there that need help.
Good, Dusty.
All right. Anything else? Any good in welfare? I'll just add one thing. I'm sorry I missed the parade and the festivities. It's probably the first Fourth of July. I've missed it 35 years. So I attended my nephew's wedding up in Idaho. And I still, Greta, I spent the fourth up on Mount Hood. So, so that was my.
Well, Stephanie drove the sewer truck very safely.
I was so afraid. I wasn't going to knock a council person off.
Unless we.
And I didn't crash it.
This, motion to adjourn then.